What you do. To several law. That's one.
I don't know. Talking to you about. When we talk.
Oh, who is that?
Yes, I have this. Yeah, yeah, yes, you're in. And I go. Oh, I thought it.
I mean, we've done.
Down. Oh, no, 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 don't let me. You had it special.
Watching watching this photo.
No.
There's something you're right. My time is seven minutes.
When I look at the photo. I haven't told you. Oh. Okay.
I won't be really there.
I thought about playing. The challenge of the thing. Simply.
Well, it should be. I mean, we practice. Um. After that.
We're not getting those things.
Right.
Okay. So we're on. Challenge.
Yeah. The way.
This could go down. Is this good? This is a special place.
How much I do as well as.
We're.
We're afraid of them.
We're.
All right.
My friend's dead. This is my difficulty. This is my left.
But. I I have special.
Yeah. And I was.
Well, we don't know the people back there. As you are. Everyone Daniel, where. Hello, where hello. He's come off the board. Okay. Um, this is your number.
I just want to get an idea. And this is.
That one.
Is that here? Oh, you're.
Oh. Tell about probably.
There we go. There.
Thank you.
I would like to call the March eighth, twenty twenty-three special city council meeting to order. Well, everyone, please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance is to reply. In the United States of America. And to the Republic of which is commands. One nation, indivisible.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Carrie.
Present.
Chilton.
Present.
Hutchings.
Present.
Nelson.
He has an excused absence.
Parker.
Present.
Whackler.
Present.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Um.
Okay, thank you, Vice Mayor Parker and Councilmember Hutchings. Are there any changes to the agenda? Are there any council objections to approving the agenda? Seeing here, seeing and hearing none, the agenda is approved. Our next item on the agenda is presentation with prior notice of the mini grant application presentations. Each speaker will have five minutes to make their presentation, and the first one up will be Bridges Community Resource Network Incorporated.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Carey.
Mr. Mayor, I seek guidance. As with probably everyone here who's been in the community for a long time, we're parts of all kinds of things. I have been a member of the Bridges Communities Resource Network Board for a long time. I believe I can be very fair, but I believe I need to ask the council whether or not they feel I have a conflict and whether or not I should. How I should participate and move forward.
I don't see any problem with it, Mr. Carey, and I would say that you would be able to participate in this.
Thank you.
Ms. Gensel, you are up. You have five minutes.
Thank you very much. So Kathy Gensel, I am the president of Bridges Community Resource Network. And one of the organizations that's underneath Bridges, of which we have close to seventy different groups that are underneath us nowadays. But this one is for Project Homeless Connect. And this is an annual event that we do. This year, we did, we had our twelfth annual Project Homeless Connect here on the central. Do you need me to? So this was our twelfth, twelfth annual Project Homeless Connect. And what we do, it's it's a point in time count for HUD, Housing and Urban Development. And so as all the communities across the nation, because it is a nationwide event. The numbers that we have are put into the Alaska HMIF system. Those numbers are gathered, sent to HUD, and that's how we get federal funding coming back to our area for homeless. And so, like I said, this has been our, this was our twelfth event that we've done here on the Central Peninsula. And Bridges has been involved with it probably for the last, oh, I don't know, maybe eight or nine years. And so as we started gathering funding, our thousand dollars that we requested with the mini grant here was to use those funds to go and purchase food gift cards for clients that were coming through Project Homeless Connect. So what we did is we purchased five dollar gift cards. We got them from Safeway, Subway, and Arby's. Our main reason is that there was, you know, each in in each community in Kenai and Soldatna. So depending on where the client was from, they would, they'd be fairly close to get that. So we distribute those cards. As the clients come through Homeless Connect and they have a chance, they do an intake with them to get all the numbers and the data that we need. Then they have a chance to go around and see all of the resources that are there. We had forty different vendors this year from DMV, which was wonderful, the first year that they've participated to, you know, CICADA was there. Students in Transition, we had folks from the school district that were there. So once the clients have gone through and met with the resources that they needed. We also had food available for them to to eat, to have a lunch, as well as to take with them. But they come through and we just do a real quick exit survey with them. Ask them, you know, questions, you know, how are you treated? Is this the first time you've been to a Project Homeless Connect? And just a few questions like that, so we can get some more data. And then before they leave, we give them a comfort kit, which is usually focused in the community that have put together, whether it's a hygiene kit or, you know, something that has, you know, snack bars in it. We also are able to give each one of them a backpack of which we get funding from Alaska Mental Health Trust that we use to purchase our backpacks. And then in that backpack then would be the hygiene kits. We had gloves, we had hats, we had plastic garbage bags. We put four in each backpack, just because sometimes that's what you need to put all your stuff in. As long as the emergency blanket, as well as the emergency blankets. We also had blankets for each of the clients that came through as well. And so so with that, we also do shower vouchers and laundry vouchers. And so we ask, you know, do you have a preference? Would you like, you know, an Arby's card, Subway card, Safeway card? And so we hand those out. Anything that we don't hand out at Project Homeless Connect goes, and that includes, you know, the resources and stuff too, goes to Love Inc. As most of our homeless folks or or near homeless folks are are kind of funnelled through Love Inc. For any resources that they need. So anything that we have left over from that event, then we go ahead and give to Love Inc. And then they continue to hand them out for the rest of the year. So any, any questions? I'm not, I don't want to steal Jody's thunder, because at the council meeting tonight, Jody's giving me the follow-up report for Homeless Connect, so she'll give you all the numbers.
Any questions from the council? Ms. Whackler.
I was actually pointing to Linda, but I know that she's going to speak on your project that you guys just completed. Could you tell us how many people, maybe just? How many people you served this last year?
This, I I want to say, I want to say we had night. That's not right. I've got my piece of paper over there. It was less than the year before. Actually, I think it, I think it ended up being like a hundred and twenty-one. And that includes, that's not just the people that that came, because usually it's less, but those people represented this many in their household, because it could be one person came and there were three other people in the household. So so was, yeah, it was right at a hundred or just over a hundred, I think. Thank you.
Ms. Hutchings.
So I want to thank you very much, Kathy, for all that you do with that program. I've walked through there for the last few years, and I've always been delighted to see how somebody's getting their haircut or they're getting the voucher for food. But the one that struck me this year was, as I was walking in this door, the one gentleman was coming out, and he was just so ecstatic because he went to the DMV booth and he thought he did not have the opportunity to get a driver's license. But they ran him through the system, and he had a driver's license that was valid from another state. So he got his driver's license and he says, now I can drive to work. So thank you.
You bet.
Any other questions from the council? Thank you, Ms. Gensel.
You're welcome.
Give everyone here a minute or so to do their score sheet. Everybody ready? Okay. Next application is the Cajun Moose Nutrition Grand Opening of Retail Store, and its presentation will be by Becca Harbor.
Mayor. May I speak, please?
Yeah, go ahead.
I have to recuse myself on this one, because the young lady rents from me.
Okay. That sounds reasonable. So there will just be the five of us on this one. So go ahead.
Awesome. Well, hello, my name is Becca Harper. Um, I own Cajun Moose Nutrition, and just to give you all a quick little backstory. We moved from here to here from Louisiana, obviously, heard me speak any. So and we moved because of my husband's health. It's just a wee bit hot in Louisiana. My husband's an electrician, so he's had a couple of heat strokes. He said, Louisiana's killing us, let's move to Alaska. So we did. Um, we picked Soldatna. Honestly, just because this is where God directed us. Um. We didn't want a big city like Anchorage or Fairbanks. We came from Shreveport, Bossier, so that was big enough. We wanted smaller. And I think we made a wise choice in picking Soldatna. My personal career goals for moving to Alaska was to open the first registered nutrition club in the state of Alaska, which I have. Cajun Moose Nutrition is the first registered nutrition club in the state of Alaska. Alaska is no stranger to Herbalife distributors. You know, Herbalife has been around for forty-two years. So I know several people who have been a distributor before and so forth, but nutrition clubs are a little bit different. They kind of fall under. Um. It's still under the MLM category, but kind of like with Avon, you run your own business. With the new, the commercial nutrition club, it's, I run my own business. I've been an Avon lady for fifteen years, and one of my favorite sayings from Avon was, you're in business for yourself, but not by yourself. And I really feel like that's how this is as well. My sister-in-law was the one who got me into it. And my brother-in-law, they both actually plan on coming up here for the grand opening, which I have scheduled for Saturday, April first. Yes, that's April Fool's Day, and that's part of the reason why I picked it too, just because I think it's funny that my grand opening is going to be on April Fool's Day. So I applied for this mini grant because the, being a for-profit business, I have less opportunity for grants. And I did get a loan, a small business loan through Alaska USA, but it's not enough. So I really do need the extra financial help. And one of the grants that I was applying for, unfortunately, I spent months applying for it, and it didn't say in the paperwork that I couldn't get it, because it was under the umbrella of Herbalife. And after I applied for it, they said, oh, I'm sorry, you can't get it, because it's an MLM. And I was like, oh. So I did come across this opportunity, so I really definitely thank y'all for having this opportunity. Um. I work at New Hope Counseling Center right now, and I receive the Chamber of Commerce emails from there. That's how I found out about the grant, is going through the Chamber of Commerce. I am currently a member of the Soldatna Chamber. I do plan on trying to become a member of the Kenai Chamber as well. So if awarded, I will use these funds for my grand opening event on April first. So like signage, outdoor and indoor signage, product samples for advertising. Um. And the like. And why, what does Cajun Moose have to offer the community? It's a healthier option to energy drinks, to caffeine drinks. We have a lot of coffee huts around town, and they are great. I love my hot coffee in the morning. But and all your energy drinks and stuff, they're full of sugar. These are not. So what is a flavored nutrition tea? They're teas that you wouldn't normally think. If you think tea, you don't normally think. Sorry. Um. They're not teas like you would normally think tea. So if I had a slogan, I would say, it's not your mama's tea. I do like my mama's tea. I would never tell my mom I don't like her tea. But this it nip. Um, so they're made up of four base ingredients. You have the herbal tea, which is an instant tea powder that has antioxidant support, has a metabolism booster in it. Nature's Rogarana is probably my favorite ingredient, because it helps with mental clarity. Just focus, thinking straight. The liftoffs are full of vitamins and minerals that help supplement your daily vitamin and mineral intake. It's also, I like to call it, it's an oxymoron, I like to call it healthy energy. So it's not just caffeine, it's full of, it does have caffeine, but it also has granulotaurine, ginseng, enzital. I always say that wrong, enosital. Um, and then the beverage drinks, the beverage mixes that are the different flavors for it are sugar-free. For the community involvement in it, I do plan on offering. Um, I've already talked to several places around town, some physical therapy offices, also my counseling office that I work for. To, I can offer part of my space as a way for them to give informational or interactive meetings. So like for the counseling office, say, we want to do a little short presentation on managing stress or anxiety or something like that. Then one of my counselors can come up and do that, and it would be free and ready, available for the public. One of the physical therapists that I've talked to, so like, say, if you have bursitis and you want to know what are some different stretches you can do for that, we'll come to the informational meeting and you can find out. Um. They will be no cost to the public, no, you know, trying to feel like an obligation to buy my products or anything like that. It's just simply a place where the community can learn, can come and learn about different things. And this is a picture that Merrill Savorsky took a couple of Wednesday markets ago of my girls and I, whenever we were tearing down at the Wednesday markets. And I just want to say thank y'all very much for this opportunity.
Any questions from the council? Vice Mayor Parker.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, thank you, Ms. Harper. That was a wonderful presentation. So if you were to see, receive this mini grant, how would the city of Soldatna be recognized for providing these funds?
Well, I would definitely include that in the advertising, that, you know, a thank you for the city of Soldatna for providing the mini grant. And also on my social media pages, that as well. I'd even put signage up on this door.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions from the council? Saying no, thank you very much for your presentation.
Appreciate it.
And here again, we'll take a minute or so to the score sheets.
So we've brought some samples for y'all. So drink it at your leisure.
One down, pass it around.
Okay, everybody ready? We'll move on to the next presentation by Lakeside Falls LLC, Try for a Cure Alzheimer's Resource Venue. That'll be by Carrie Foster, and that'll be done by Zoom. Ms. Foster, you are up, and you have five minutes. Can you hear me, Ms. Foster? We see you, we see your phone number on the screen, but your phone is muted. There you go.
This is Ashlyn O'Hara at the Clarion. I don't think I'm the one you're looking for.
Hi, Ashlyn.
Is this Carrie Foster?
It's the Clarion.
Sorry about that.
Carrie was tentative.
You want me to call her?
She was, she said, especially. Arby's, she said that she would call if she was able to. She's been getting this information.
Your try calls.
You want me to?
Yeah.
Sure. Their phone numbers right here.
Yeah, we'll move on. We'll move on to Surf Birds Board Art, Wednesday Market, twenty twenty-three t-shirt printing, and that'll be by April Murr. Thank you. You'll have five minutes to make your presentation.
Hey. Forgive me, I've never done anything like this before. I'm slightly nervous.
Okay. We don't bite.
I I hope not. My husband and I started a kind of an art side job in two thousand and sixteen, at the same time while our life was kind of going up in flames with the oil and gas industry bursting. We lost everything with everyone we knew. You know, our story was the same as everybody else that we ran into. And in the middle of everything, I looked at him and asked him if he wanted to sell artwork on the road, because that was the only thing that we were managing to do at the time at the Anchorage Saturday Market. At the time, we were meeting people from all over the country, all over the world, actually. I sold artwork to people from Brazil, France. I mean, it's kind of interesting just how many people congregate in Alaska. So I asked him if he wanted to do it on the road, and he agreed, to my surprise. We loaded up our kids, we loaded up the artwork, and left Alaska with. We loaded up our kids, we loaded up the artwork and left Alaska with way too much optimism for somebody in our situation. We jumped off the cliff and built the plan on the way down. We had no idea what we were doing. And still to this day, I learned something new every time I set up and sell anywhere I go. We did this on the road until the pandemic hit. When the pandemic hit, the art show stopped because when we had to stop meeting people in person, there went my entire business. I'm not the type of person who wants to sell everything online. I believe in actually talking to someone because art has a story and every artist is, that's the only way to get it out. So if you really want to know anything about me, look at my artwork. My artwork is kind of interesting. It's a little different. My very first mentor told me that I had to be able to set my artwork up along a hundred other artists, walk away from it and people be able to pick out who did it. That's impossible to do when you stop and think about it. But mine happened by accident. I made a mess. I was going to do a wet on wet watercolor. My child comes running in, mommy, 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 something's wrong with the washing machine. Obviously I dropped that, run off, go see what's wrong with her. Come back, think I've ruined a $30 piece of paper. And honestly, I see something inside the splatter. I saw the Northern Lights and the mountains and I was like, oh, it looks so pretty, just like a war shack test. So I tried to explain to my husband what I want to do. Just going to paint inside the splatter and he just nods. Okay, babe, you do what you need to do. I do finally do the painting, come back and show him, finally give him something he can see. He understands. Okay, this looks pretty good. He backs me. We start trying to sell this stuff locally. And then I said, everything fell out and we took it on the road. I've won a lot of art show awards and a lot of prestigious places. I've gone up a lot of people against a lot of other artists who have been doing this their entire lives and still managed to place. And I was very, very pleased with what we got out of that. We met a lot of interesting people, did a lot of interesting things, but it came time to settle down. Our kids were getting ready to enter high school and I did not want to homeschool them. I wanted to give them a social aspect. I didn't want to live where we ended up, which was Florida. I have absolutely no desire to go back to Florida. My husband longed for Alaska. I missed Alaska as well. We came back. My in-laws graciously offered us a place on the Casiloff River. And if you can find one person wants to turn down a place right on the Casiloff, you let me know. So we live there now. Did the Wednesday market, met so many people. But what I'm asking for is money in order to get my artwork on a shirt just for the Wednesday market. Annette Vila, the lady who runs the Wednesday market, said she was looking for someone like me because I have a professional setup. I have professional artwork, I have professional demeanor when I'm selling my work. And she got to me and asked me if I would consider doing artwork on a shirt. I'm funding this all on my own, so I'm running my own business and then just picked up something else on the side. But I'm not really looking to let this opportunity pass me by. It's going to happen one way or another. So even if you don't give me the funds, still come out and see me because they'll be there. But I just wanted to give it a shot because, you know, you don't, you don't get it if you don't ask for it. So here I am. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any questions from the council? Mr. Chelsin?
Uh, thank you for coming and presenting today. So my question is, on the shirt that you're working with Annette to develop for the Wednesday market, is this going to actually have advertising for the Wednesday market? Like say Soldatna Wednesday Market in conjunction with your art?
It will. At the very top, Soldatna Wednesday Market 2023, because I plan on doing one of these every single year. And it's going to change every single year.
It's a great way to advertise our market and celebrate.
Considering how many people I've met from all over the world, yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the council? Saying none. Thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you.
I had a quick, I'm sorry, I, I just wanted to say, um, thank you. Um, and thank you for starting this. This is a great idea. Because I, I think Soldatna Wednesday Market and along with Concert in the Park is, is going to continue to grow. And having nice local artists here is, is always wonderful and.
I've never seen anything like that. You know, we've done shows all over the country and I've never seen somebody put on a continuous weekly show, bring in bands from all over. Just it's, it's different. It's so different than anything I've ever seen. So I'm happy to be a part of it and I'm glad that it goes on for as long as it does because it gives me an opportunity to meet people that I would never meet unless I literally walked up to everyone I met. Hi, I'm April. So.
Well, it will, it will, the Wednesday market along with Music in the Park will go on for the next three years based on grant funds that were received from Neville Foundation. So it will be continuous.
Awesome. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
She said she was going to call him. I talked to Carrie.
You're going to call one?
Yes, she said she would be calling him. When I chatted with her, she said she was in Arizona and I said, call in like five minutes. Because of the time difference, she was off.
We'll give it another couple of minutes. What I'm going to do here is if we don't hear from Ms. Foster by 4:35, you can go ahead and use the score sheets based on the written application. Maybe we've got somebody here. Ms. Foster, are you on the line there? The ending phone number, 4640? Ms. Foster, can you hear me?
I'm muted.
If you, okay, you're on muted now. Uh, you have five minutes to make a presentation to the council on the Lakeside.
Okay, my name, yes, Lakeside Fall. My name is Carrie Foster. My husband and I own the Lakeside Fall Event Center. And each year we, we donate our time, our, our space for a fundraiser for the Alzheimer's Resource Center of Alaska where they raise funds and awareness for Alzheimer's research that is contributed right to the, the people that are suffering from Alzheimer's, which there's was both of our mothers passed from, so it's kind of, we're kind of passionate about it. Alzheimer's Resource of Alaska has been around for 30 years and Alzheimer's is the most common form of dementia. And each year in Soldatna, on the longest day or as close to the longest day as they can, they, they do a fundraiser to, to help raise money for the people that have Alzheimer's because that's one of the things that, that they say is that their day never ends. So they do, it's called Try For A Cure and we host a triathlon where they paddle for a mile and they walk or run for two miles and then they bike for four and a half miles. They pay an entry fee and they get sponsors and all that money goes directly to Alzheimer's. That's pretty much all I, I have unless you have any questions.
Are there any questions from the council? Vice Mayor Parker.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Foster, for calling in. Um, this is Lisa, this is Lisa Parker. Two questions for you. Um, how many participants have you had in the past?
Last year was our first year. We had nine competitors, but we had about 40 people that attended to come and watch the race and participate in the auction and the fundraisers. This year we're anticipating quite a few more. We're hoping for at least 25 competitors.
Is there an entry fee?
Yes, there is. They pay an entry fee and that money goes to the Alzheimer's Resource Center. Cindy Harris is the, the director for that. Uh, we just, we donate our space and because they, they want to do it on the longest day of the year, our event center, um, normally we, we charge by the day and so we have to block that out and not, not be able to schedule a paying event, you know, so we, we donate the rest of it to them.
The Lakeside Fall Event Center is where?
It's out on Forest Lane. I think you can find our website. We're a member of the Chamber of Commerce. It's about a mile and a third down Forest Lane, north of town, about mile 89 and a half. We have a, a large 40-foot man-made waterfall and water wheel on, and we live on a lake. So the people that participate in the triathlon actually paddle across the lake and they bike on the road. Um, and they also walk or run on the road.
Thank, thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions from the council? Saying none. Thank you, Ms. Foster, for your presentation and we will be looking at this right now.
Okay.
Thank you. Have a minute, so to score your sheets there. The next item on the agenda is New Business Other Action Memorandum 2023-004 Determining Fiscal Year 23 Cycle 2 Mini Grant Awards. At this time, um, we will take a short break here while the clerk tallies the scores and we come up with that. All right, we'll be back in order here and we'll have the scores.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Based on the scores, uh, following the review of the different mini grant applications, I would move to award mini grants to the following applicants in the following amounts. Our highest ranking group being Bridges Community Resources to be awarded $1,000. Our second highest ranking group, Lakeside Falls, to be awarded $1,000. And our third highest ranking group, Surfbirds, uh, to be awarded $1,000.
May I have a second? Thank you, Vice Mayor Parker. Any council comments?
I would just add that it was really great to see as many people come out, uh, this evening as we had applying to do such great things in our community. So thank you all for coming today and for those that you didn't get it, I appreciate the effort and like to see you try again in the future. So, thank you.
Vice Mayor Parker, if you have something?
We can always go to the grand opening April 1st for the KJ Moose Nutrition.
Very true. Thank you.
Any other comments? We'll call for the vote.
Chelsin?
Yes.
Hutchings?
Yes.
Parker? Whackler?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
You have five yes votes.
The, um, motion passes on a 5-0 vote with one, um, absent. We'll move on to the next item on the agenda is public comments. Members of the public will have three minutes to comment. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment? For those participating through Zoom, please raise your hand if you would like to comment. App users by pressing the Raise Your Hand button and phone participants by dialing star nine on your telephone. Anyone else wishing to comment? Saying none. We'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is council comments. Any council comments? Saying none, we will move on to the next agenda item, which is adjournment. And the special meeting is adjourned. Next item up will be the work session with the public work, I mean, with planning and zoning.
Thank you very much.
Dennis, did you wonder what was going on when you walked in? I was gonna say, oh, we're doing a special, but it's almost over, but then, no. That's right, right place.
Yeah.
No.
Yes.
But yeah, whether or not that.
But you may not just.
I switch it up and not sit next to you.
You want me to move or what do you want?
I don't know. I was sure if I change.
Well, you've been voting the way you wanted to regard it, so again, I don't think it matters.
Oh, I always do what I want.
I have no doubt about that, which is what it should be. Only way it should be. Just for you. Hello.
If you need a weekend time after this. So at any point, I'm gonna. Work through a short. Hold on. And anything about me at any time. Before I get started, does everybody know what? Make sure you don't talk to others and talk to others and don't.
Yeah.
Don't be.
Sonia Barbaza, planning and zoning.
Dave Carey, council.
Lisa Parker, City Council. City Queen, City Manager.
Because in the back, back row, a lot of. So even started. Talking about the commercial district, I thought it was important to somebody to understand also what we. Certainly we have. Commercial zone, a regular. We can. Think of what is going on.
Oh, there you go. Your touch again. Oh, there you go. You had it. Oh. Oh, there you go. Yeah. I think so, right? There we go. All right, we're set. So again, we're here to talk about the commercial core and we thought it was a good place to start to talk about what we have existing. Which includes two commercial zoning districts, a limited commercial and a commercial. Uh, the existing commercial district provides for a lot of different uses and a wide range of uses. Uh, there's currently in our C District, twenty-eight principal uses and thirteen conditional uses for a total of forty-one. And some of these uses have never been established and in other cases were established at one point and have disappeared. And those include things like funeral homes, greenhouses, welding shops, cabinet shops, museums. Uh, commercial parking lots, arcades, bowling alleys, lumber yards, heavy industry, correctional centers and so on. And if we look, actually, I'll get you another slide here at our zoning map. You will see that most of our commercial land, that's which is yellow. Is along our corridors, along our Sterling Highway, Spur Highway and K Beach Road. Uh, and that represents about fifteen percent of the zoned area in the city of Soldatna. So why is the planning commission considering a new zoning district? Their work session exercises included a review of existing land uses across the proposed study area. Uh, and I'll show you that as well here in a little bit. They looked at the presence or absence of permitted uses. They looked at how land was being used, whether it was vacant, whether it was underutilized. They looked at. Potentially non-compatible uses being actively permitted. So, a- as you know, the commission. Uh, works to review conditional use permits. And they see through their work, a number of uses that they felt weren't necessarily appropriate for the for the commercial district. In addition, there's a number of. Actively administrative permits that may also be questionable as to whether they should be allowed within the commercial district. So. That was a second reason why the planning commission was looking at a new zoning district. Another is that they observe non-commercial uses in the commercial district. So this could be schools, could be churches, could be government buildings, police, fire and so on. Fourth, they looked at the size of Soldatna and our annexation effort. They recognized there's a high demand for limited commercial space. Uh, Soldatna is small and the outlook of getting bigger isn't in our, probably in our cards, is questionable. So how do we target the appropriate uses to the limited space we have is the question. And then fifth, um, the commission looked at existing commercial zoning district standards. Um, as I mentioned, a lot of these, a lot of the standards currently. Allow for a number of different types of uses or in some cases, they may lack specific standards. That would allow the commission to guide development in a more appropriate way. And then last city plans and projects. So the commission looked at our planning documents and the guidance that they offered. They also took in consideration our existing riverfront redevelopment project. And. They asked themselves the question, how might the creation of that new riverfront district complement this effort? Or how could this effort complement that effort? What's the appropriate timing for this? Should this be happening now and should or should be happening later? If it happens now, will it need to be adjusted later? Is something needed immediately now because of the types of uses that we're seeing? So those are some of the things that we talked about when we talked about our city plans and projects and timing. So to give you an idea of. Thinking about the commercial core, one of the things, one of the exercises we had was to. Um, have some idea of a potential boundary for any future zoning district. And. What you see here before you is an outline of the, this kind of tan area, which is. What we're calling the commercial core. It basically stretches from gateway to gateway and a little beyond on this end. But. The actual boundaries themselves aren't critical in this discussion. And that's because this, you know, what they've been working on doesn't rezone any land. It creates a new zoning district in the menu of zoning district. So instead of commercial and limited commercial, they're proposing a third district being the commercial core. So, uh, in this case. Like I say, the actual boundaries really aren't critical, but it gives the planning commission the ability to think about an area. They have to have this reference in thinking about the land uses that would be appropriate in that, in an area. If you said it was the entire C District, their response and I think their recommendations would be very different than what they are for this more condensed area. As I mentioned, uh, the planning commission looked at existing city plans. Um, some of these are some of the goals from our documents that called for things like concentrated. Commercial zones, establishing an overlay district for the Sterling Highway Riverfront Corridor. Uh, and encouraging a relationship with the Kenai River. And from our downtown improvement plan. Couple highlights. Or recommendations, I should say, included identifying key areas to concentrate commercial and retail activity. Focus on land uses that increase the ability and desire of people to spend time in Soldatna. And intensify the mix of uses near downtown. So, uh, to summarize, the planning commission looked at our existing plans. Uh, the land use trends that are currently occurring, the availability of land now and into the future. Uh, the types of uses that would be most appropriate based on our plans. And the fact that we aren't likely to expand our borders anytime soon. Uh, and they also, as I mentioned, consider the current riverfront project. And so with all those things in mind. Uh, we started with this question that's up on this, up on the screen. Which led to a whiteboard exercise that we spent a couple meetings on going through different uses and different ideas. On what should be encouraged or discouraged within a new commercial zoning district. And. Before we could get. To the, uh. The writing of the, of a resolution that would make those recommendations on uses to allow or not allow or encourage or not encourage. Um, it was important also that an intent statement be drafted. And the intent statement. Really is the borders or the guardrails for. For the new zoning district. It frames or framed the discussion and outlines what's trying to be accomplished. So here too. I'll give you a second to read it, but basically it's intended to provide a core area that is visually pleasing. That emphasizes a mix of compatible uses and encourage pedestrian environment, connectivity, increased density and activity within its boundaries. With the objectives being to strengthen the role of the area as a unique retail tourism, entertainment, business and cultural hub for the region. And to accommodate mixed-use residential development. So again, that's kind of framed the discussion for the commission. So back to the question that I posed before the intent in what uses should be encouraged or discouraged. And just so you know, my shorthand PC is Planning Commission is, if you're wondering what that is. So with that intent in mind, uh, the planning commission recommended the following uses for the commercial core district. These are by right uses. Uh, or principal uses that would only require administrative review. We also went through a list of conditional uses that the planning commission is encouraging and that'll be on the next slide. But right now, these are. The principal uses, actually, it's the next two slides. Uh, and no, just this one, sorry. Uh, it's just this slide of principal uses that are being encouraged. And it represents thirteen unique uses. And currently in our commercial zoning district code, it allows for twenty-eight uses. So this cuts it down by over half. And those uses include assembly and concert halls, dwellings that are part of a mixed-use development. So independent dwellings would no longer be allowed as a standalone type of project. It would have to be part of a larger development. Uh, eating and drinking establishments, financial services, museums and art galleries. Light industry to include breweries, brew pubs, distilleries. Offices that are also part of a mixed-use development. Parks and day-use playgrounds, personal services, recreational facilities. Uh, that would be indoor related. Uh, retail sales, but not including pawn shops or short-term lenders. Uh, theaters and schools that allow for dance and music instruction. It is. Condition.
Is there any light industry? Encouraged other than alcohol related?
Let me go to conditional.
Well, it wasn't listed there.
Uh, no, it's not. So other light industry is not encouraged. Uh, lighting industry really encourages a wide range of uses. I want to find that definition for you to give you an idea of what's all included. Yeah, please do.
Um, because I know some of the best practices now to. Um, in addition to art galleries is making it downtown friendly to other light industry like a glass blower or a fine captain tree maker. And those and other places have been shown to increase business and foot traffic in the area we need. So we wanted, I remember we talked about that a little bit. I thought as a commission, we wanted that to be a principal use. But the definition is tricky, so if there's a way that we can. Um, make that be a principal use.
Yeah.
We wanted to, we just didn't know how to define it.
No, that's a good point. And Maker Crafts is what we're calling them. And that was included. It's actually in your resolution that was approved. So it's in there. It just didn't make it on my slide.
Maker Crafts additional or primary?
A principal use, yes. Yeah. Yeah, other types of a light industry include things like. fabrication, processing, assembly, treatment, packaging, incidental storage, sales, distribution of such products, but excluding basic industrial processing and so on. So
Is there an exclusion in there for dry cleaning establishment? A problem that had a long ago.
There, there isn't, and we probably would treat dry cleaners, I'm thinking as retail, more so than light industry, but there isn't any type of prohibition in either case for dry cleaners.
That might be something that I'd consider because part of the problems that caused because of dry cleaners. Is it a chemical? I mean, is it a chemical? Yes.
What I don't know anymore is, is the types of chemicals that are allowed to be used.
Actually, any kind of chemical, whether it's a dry cleaner or somebody who's doing it.
I think Stephanie has some information.
Yeah, Johnny, it might also follow, fall under personal services, but I, I could say that I think we could be confident that new dry cleaners moving forwards would be under a different regulatory structure than the dry cleaners that we've histor- experienced these historic problems from. So I wouldn't expect that new dry cleaners moving forward would be in a position to create the kind of contamination that we're, the legacy contamination we're dealing with currently.
Okay, and then moving on to planning commission recommended land uses to encourage conditions. So these would be uses that would require a conditional use permit. And it includes transmission towers and boat launching sites. And I should mention that these two are already listed in the commercial zoning district as conditional uses. So essentially there would be no change. The remain, remainder though are currently by right uses or, you know, that would only require an administrative permit. And so automobile fueling, daycare centers, guide services, lodging, offices, recreational facilities that are outdoor, repair services and parking lots would all require conditional use permits where currently they require a administrative permit in the C district.
So John, existing facilities would be grandfathered. It would only be new businesses that would be required to get a conditional permit.
That's correct. And there is, and, and I'll go through the non-conforming provisions in our code, which does essentially allow them to continue and maintain, but not expand or enlarge their business if they're non-conforming. But I'll, I'll go through that just a little bit. Would they be allowed to continue?
Question on the conditional approval process. So our goal here is to basically establish, you know, this field that we're seeking for development with our downtown core. And, you know, we're trying to quantify that with all these different rules as far as what really aligns with that field that we're going towards. But, you know, there's a lot of things that, you know, are targeted by conditional use here that it's, it's really difficult to, you know, say whether or not they, they will always fall within that structure or not, you know, things don't land on the spectrum. So, you know, one operation that might really fit the field we're going for could meet the conditional use requirements while the other one doesn't really align to that field at all, but still needs that use. So do our commissioners have discretion to deny that conditional use or what's?
Only if they've got the, the standards to back up their decision. And so that is something, I'm glad you brought it up. There's something that is currently missing in our, in our code is specific standards for certain types of uses. Many codes, so for example, lodging or parking lots or automobile fueling might require a number of different types of things that the commission can consider and, and look at, whether it's how many can happen, like essentially buffer distances between similar types of uses. For lodging, I've seen some some regulations that, that specifically allow the commission to look at length of stay so that no length of stay is greater than thirty days and no length of stay, or that they're not renting out rooms more than twice per day. So there's a series of different types of standards that could be developed for unique uses if that is something.
So we can't run out of discretion to ensure compatibility with the field that we're targeting. We really have to have a very robust set of standards to correspond with.
I, I would, yeah, encourage additional standards specifically for uses that, you know, may that you have concerns about that may cause problems or that you know historically have caused problems either here or in other communities. But yeah, right now, I think the commission will tell you it's very difficult for them to, to maybe I should let you talk about, yeah, you're, you know, when you're making these decisions, what you can and can't do is, is limited by, by the code. And so trying to think of the, the one example recently was the storage yard. I think you guys wanted to do some, some additional requirements on that to make it more appropriate for the commercial district. And I think that was one of the things that, that got us here also was granted that, that the conditional use permit that they passed was in the commercial district. It wasn't in this core and, and they recognized, you know, if, if this was right in the middle of our downtown, you know, would we want this? Because, because it's set off where it is now, it, it's probably not a big deal. But if it was located at the inner, or at the Y, it probably wouldn't be appropriate. Commissioners have anything they want to add?
Yeah, but we didn't have anything. Yes, that's really one of the.
Otherwise you'd end up in court.
Yeah. We didn't, well, we didn't have anything.
Any other questions before we go on?
On grandfather rights, you can't expand. If it's sold, the business is sold, property is sold. Can they continue that business?
They can. Under current code, ownership doesn't affect non-conformities. So the next thing we, well, before I, let's go back for a second. So again, these are the, the uses to encourage with conditional use permit. And there's thirteen of them here. No, I'm sorry, there are ten of them here, down from thirteen. Uses to discourage things that we perhaps don't want to see in that commercial core area. So all of the ones listed here and, and on the next slide are currently allowed in our commercial district, either as principally permitted use or as a conditional use. And the thing to, to remember, and I think we got a little confused on this as well when we had some folks attend the meeting. It was, y- you see the uses to discourage in the commercial core, that, that is for that zoning district only. So these uses are still available for use in the other zoning districts that allow them. So, so just to make it clear, this doesn't ban these uses throughout the city, only in the zoning district as, as proposed. So the first one is animal care, veterinarian clinics and animal hospitals. I think the council had a lot of back and forth on that one. There was mixed, I think, feelings as to whether and correct me if I'm wrong, whether there would provide the kind of activity and use that we're looking for in, in the downtown. Some felt, yeah, it's going to bring people in. Others thought, you know, I don't know, having a bunch of people with sick dogs and cats, is that, is that what we want to say? I don't know. Automobile detailing service, rental, sale and car wash. So here too, this is one of those uses that it's, it's a, it's a part of our, it's a part of our downtown. It's, you know, all the way from one end to the other. And the commission, I think, discussed this one for a while too, trying to figure out what's the appropriate use. And they settled just on the fueling aspect of automobile services.
That's interesting because sales tax is such a big part of our city. And I will tell you, every three months, I write a check to the borough for fifteen thousand dollars. And so you're saying you don't want that business in this.
The other question I have on retail is how's that work when you've got this very large dealership coming into the city? The zoning standard before they actually open their doors, did they get told, sorry, can't open right as they're finishing or?
They've already got their.
No, they've received their entitlements and, and started construction, so they would continue, but they would continue as a non-conformant use.
That's going to be paying you lots of sales tax.
And I think too, though, that because use transfers with ownership, like if any automobile services are, are sold like that, there's that for forever.
So we just, we discussed that that doesn't go away when the owners take over, but what happens in a situation where a person closes a shop, business is no longer licensed, it's vacant for a year, someone goes to buy out their new business, are they still grandfathered?
Uh, no. And so it's basically one year. If, if the use is not used for a year or it changes to a conforming use prior to that year, then it has to be broader into the con- performance of the code.
So if there's a very uniquely purposeful facility that sits vacant for a year, that's going to be really hard to sell after that year mark.
Potentially, yeah. Other ones that were listed include campgrounds, including RV vehicles, private lodges, fraternal organizations, church.
Eagles, Elks.
Yeah, that's what I would have said too. Probably the limits. Just limits its, its entry to private members only, that type of thing. I don't, I'm not aware of any private lodges in Soldatna. I'm aware of some paternal organizations, but not private lodges. But our code currently calls them out as private lodges and paternal organizations. Uh, other ones listed are churches, community residences for handicaps, emergency shelters and correctional centers. Yes. So, and right, so our existing assisted living would become non-conforming.
So, so they couldn't expand?
Correct. Uh, dwellings that are non-mixed use, funeral homes, marijuana retail and testing.
Question on the marijuana one, because looking at page eleven, it's packed at you. Limits, you know, cultivation of all forms, manufacturing, testing and retail. But I don't see anything listed as far as onsite consumption. So we are encouraging bars in this district. But how would that work if someone wants to establish a hookah bar where they're smoking marijuana via hookah? With onsite consumption, like businesses oriented towards that, how would that be regulated? I don't know if that counts as retail or not, really selling it over the counter.
I don't know that. They would need a license, some type of state license, either a, a retail license or a
I'm not knowing whether the licensing, if there's a different license other than retail for onsite consumption.
I've, I've not aware. Stephanie, are you aware of a separate license that's been established for onsite consumption?
Yeah, I think it's an endorsement that you add on to a retail license. And I would have to check our other section of code that's not in zoning that broadly covers retail establishments. So we could check to see if our existing code already deals with that issue. I think it may, but I don't, I could pull that up while you guys are talking.
The delineation between like a packaged liquor store and a bar and not, we're not really encouraging liquor stores on this. We are encouraging bars for people to kind of, you know, and I don't really see the delineation between a bar and onsite consumption of marijuana. Right? So I think that should be clarified.
Uh, this is the second part of the list for discouraging particular uses in the commercial core. Commercial greenhouses, heavy and light industry, handicap institutions, healthcare institutions. So that gets to the question about the assisted living, lumberyards, offices that are non-mixed use. So it permit offices and, and residential uses that are part of the mixed-use development. Schools unless, unless they were music instruction or dance instruction would be discouraged. Storage yards and units, warehousing, wholesale, pawn shops and short-term lenders. These are the, the payday loan type businesses that high interest rate, short, short payback period and short. Yeah, usually, yeah, they, they are. They're right.
My question, so on, on the issue of schools, is there any reason that you're keeping that dance schools but not other private schools like study or something?
I think dance schools and the music schools were seen as being, and correct me if I'm wrong, but more appropriate with the, the commercial core being, bringing activity to the, to the area.
How is one school different from other schools?
Well, I think probably if you think, I don't have any kids that went to dance school, but my understanding or music, no, I did have a kid go to music structure. But the hours of operation for those schools typically are not just an eight to five top type of thing. They're open at later hours, they're open on weekends. Yep, lots of people coming and going.
Sure.
So it's, it's.
Well, maybe one modification I consider is rather than scope the dance, just call it art schools.
And then if the study has art programs, then they would be fine.
Yeah, if the study wants to do a dance curriculum, they could do that too.
Is it a food karate?
You don't want full-size K-12 charter school or something, right? Maybe also consider like a square footage limitation on that as well as like the old artsy studio or something could be committed downtown. It'd sound like a giant facility that's more appropriate outside town, like the one they have up on the hill or something.
We, I think covered a, a lot of these already. There's been a couple of questions about non-conformities. So as, as we mentioned, that the proposal that's in your, your packet that the planning commission passed as a, as a resolution does reduce the number of uses that are currently allowed and therefore will create these non-conformities. And I estimate about a dozen residential and probably fifteen to twenty commercial uses would become non-conforming under, under this proposal. There's a number of different categories of non-conforming uses. We've already talked about automobile, boat, RV, detailing, repair, rental, sale. So those uses, food and storage lockers, light industry, marijuana establishments, campgrounds, dwellings, institutions and warehousing are some of the broad categories where we. And warehousing are some of the broad categories where we have some existing businesses that fall into those categories that would become nonconforming. And this gets to a couple of questions about how our nonconforming use is treated. As I mentioned, they can be continued, but they can't be expanded or enlarged upon. With regard to change in ownership. As I mentioned, there are two, nothing prevents someone from selling a a nonconforming structure or use to another person, they'll be, they are able to continue that use. Um but if a use that's nonconforming is discontinued for a period of one year, um and it's replaced by a conforming use. Then the structural land has to conform with the with the new code.
John, I'd add maybe a fourth bullet, that if a use was previously or currently in the principal permitted, and if the code were to be changed, that now that use is considered conditional. It could expand, it would just have to go through that conditional use process, so the opportunity would be there for all those conditional uses to expand with that different type of review.
That's a good point, thank you. And um.
Would that expansion uh apply to acquisition of adjoining lots, like someone has conditional use on their property and they want to buy the property adjacent to them, expand it, would they be allowed to, if there's a normal expansion if they're existing property bought?
No, they should be able to, if they wanted to expand their structure and it meets our code with regard to um. What you'll see here in a second. They could combine lots and and facilitate their expansion into their additional space. One of the questions that was raised earlier about whether if somebody begins construction like the auto dealer, um and we pass something. Um and so here our code states that uh nothing requires, nothing in our code requires a a change in plans or construction. Um when construction was lawfully started prior to the effective date of the ordinance. And under repairs and maintenance, our code currently states that any nonconforming structure or building. Uh devoted in whole or parts when I can form use that you can repair or maintain that building uh in a period of twelve consecutive months. For ordinary uh repairs, but it can't exceed ten percent of the current replacement value of the building. This is a interesting section of code that's uh is impossible to um enforce. It's uh there there's no way we can track improvements unless our building official is going in on a regular basis and uh taking pictures and. Identifying uses.
Like it's going on an anchor, it looks collapsing. And we have a building that's um, you can say nonconforming. Because of a fire or roof collapse or something, they have to replace the whole building. Not going to be allowed.
Under our current code, it would not be allowed, uh I I'd have to double check though on whether there's any kind of. Exception for uh acts of God, I don't think there are. Uh I I think whether the whether it goes out of business on its own, or whether a tornado comes and picks it up and deposits somewhere else. It wouldn't be able to be rebuilt as a nonconforming use.
Finally, would not be an act of God.
Could be. Might not be.
Like this fire?
Yeah. Depends on which business we're talking about.
Is there any fear that buildings may be um be in disrepair, do you think? They have no motivation to.
Sure, there's this backfire, we actually make the downtown district public, so it's a larger business.
No, I don't think so, I mean, we've been operating under these rules for uh probably since nineteen eighty-five. Um and and so there hasn't been any any kind of uh. Thought that's the you know, the structures that are. It it it's, well, it's an interesting question, because we allow so many uses that very little of our uses are are nonconforming. So. Uh it's, I would highly doubt. And I could not imagine that someone would allow their investment to deteriorate to the point where they they. Went to something with it, we've had a few cases of a few buildings that have been vacant for a long time. Um and the one I'm thinking of is the old magic moments one, but that building, they actually got a grant from the city for storefront improvements and improved the facade. But still haven't been able to get someone in that building, at least, I think, I think they're on their way to finding a tenant though, from what I hear. But I I, so I don't see that as an issue. I don't know about other. Callie, you have thought?
Yeah, I know. Our grandfather, he's just all the town, technically, he's got that. And once the building is made, then it's. On there, it makes. Like maybe from his home, it's perfect. All over the land, and in the United States, it's about there. He doesn't, he doesn't suggest folks to think any minor maintenance against the building. What does trigger that? Requiring a lot of the current. And generally speaking, this is major, you know, major remodel. Or a building collapse or. Something there, it doesn't.
I'm thinking of one particular point in my life where I was renting a building, and there was minor leaks and the. The landlord didn't ever want to actually do the maintenance to fix it properly because. It was such an old building that they would have to, it would be too expensive. So they made the decision to continue doing patches and patches and patches, and that building is still, it's scary.
Yeah, sometimes it's a, you know, sometimes it's a issue pressure, you know, it needs to remove, but you can't let it move.
And as I mentioned, this this section with regard to the uh ten percent of the current replacement value and the amount of work, it it's not a section of code that's um that has been applied.
Well, my question is, it's replacement value, but who's going to decide on the replacement value? You've got your assessment, you've got appraisals, and then you have insurance, that tells you a completely different figure for replacement value.
Yeah, there's a lot of problems with this. So to to summarize, what this resolution would accomplish is first and foremost, it would create a new commercial core zoning district. Uh in our menu of of zoning districts, so we go from two commercial districts to three commercial districts. It targets and limits allowable uses to those that are appropriate for our gateway to gateway area. It adopts an intent statement that was designed to help. Help, like I said, put guardrails on the discussion as far as what are those appropriate uses, do they follow that intent that's been adopted or that's being considered? And then um. As with any amendment to our our zoning code, um once you touch one section, you usually have to touch several others, and there's, I think, thirteen or fourteen sections of code that. Uh would be affected by uh the adoption of a new section of zoning code, so uh you will see a, or you've seen a lot of changes if you look through the packet. Um as I mentioned earlier, what it doesn't do is it doesn't rezone any land, um it only establish, establish the the district as an option for future use. So at some point, should you adopt a new zoning code or a new zoning district? You would have to at at some point, if you wanted to implement it, is to specifically identify those boundaries uh and figure out exactly where it's going to go. Uh and then there would be a large uh public process where I anticipate we would reach out to all landowners in that area, uh do a do a direct mailing. Uh and do a public notice to them that we are proposing to rezone this area from this to this, and then here's how it affects your property. Uh so that would be, that would be the future step. That would come down the road.
Has the planning commission discussed this over the last year? What type of input have you had from the business community and have there been sessions that you've invited businesses to come in and talk?
Well, you know. You know, work session and another than just going out there and talking to community members. A lot of the discouraged uses that we've had, there were a lot of it. Comments from the public, so a level example, you know, discouraging, you know, one establishments. That was one resounding comment from community that I heard, so. Other than going out uh and talking to the people, we encourage people to come to the meetings, but we did.
See a couple of people come.
Why not improve both sides of the pond?
I'm just going to ask that, do you have any uh, you see any benefit utilizing this on the spur at some point in the future? Or do you you view that as being a fundamentally different zoning district?
So I I just want to make sure I understand the mayor's question, are you talking about both sides of the Sterling Highway, or are you talking about the spur highway and the and the Sterling Highway?
Yeah.
Okay, yep, yeah, and.
Other than some of that commercial.
Yeah, my question is on the spur, you you see that in a different intended commercial district, uh what we do have along the river?
Yeah, I I think so, yeah, um I think. We're we're trying to ensure our our riverfront plan is developing unique uh attributes in the city, and there are some uses that that are probably more appropriate than others. Yeah, but that doesn't mean that those usion uses shouldn't be allowed within the community, um and and so. Um what this does, and I think I may have a.
And I might get busy designing the.
No, I don't.
Or you have some supply part. Got a tiny river.
Yeah.
The ground knowledge. That are about downtown.
So I guess my my other question extending on that is you mentioned this, calling it the grant of the the larger river redevelopment project we've been working on, has there been any collaboration with that team on on this uh rezone?
Uh we we have talked to them and and they've provided some input, and when we first presented the planning commission's work after, I think it was the first work session. That had lists of recommended uh or encouraged uses and and discouraged uses, they came back and they did have comments on two, possibly three uses, one was on daycares. Um they recommended that daycares be allowed within the. The district, um I think they they've mentioned vet clinics as as additional one, and I can't remember the third one because. Yeah.
Was it the art schools? My difference. Yeah, my life is also. Doing these things.
Yeah, this has gone through some different iterations, you know, we've talked, you know, it's like you said, they've they've, the commissions have been looking at for a while. And uh things have been tweaked a number of times back and forth, and if you look at the packet, there was one, you know, where the substitute was introduced, there was uh about a. Ten or twelve changes that were made in that based on feedback from both staff, the commission and the folks attending our meetings. Yeah, I can't remember that last one either, maybe it was um. Maker crafts, that was one thing that got modified. Short term lenders and and pawn shops was something that was amended at a later date, so yeah, a number of things to get tweaked in the process.
I like the building I prefer. Keep the sun coming in.
Yeah, that's uh, things like building heights and design standards are something that you typically see in some of the the lower forty-eight. Districts that have more substantial um codes that are looking for a particular look. They'll have design standards that regulate everything from. And they vary, they they don't all do this, but some look at the types of materials on the exterior, some look at the setbacks, how closely they're located to the to the road. Where the parking is located, others look at um entryways um and where they're situated and what frontage something is is on, so. It's a wide range of things, and I guess I consider this um essentially a a first step towards trying to identify the. Appropriate uses for for the gateway area. The more I say that, the more I like gateway zoning district more than commercial core. But um. So so yeah, so now we're at the point where um. What do we do at this point, right, you know, it's um. Are, is the council ready to to consider this, or is the timing right, you know, like I said, we've got our our riverfront redevelopment project coming up. Um do you have questions, issues, amendments that you you see, you know, and and we just covered. Real high level here today, we didn't go over the resolution as it was passed and all the the standards uh in in detailed form, so I I want to get your. Your feedback and and ideas on that path forward.
Owen?
I would say that I greatly appreciate all the work that the commission has put into this, I think this is a fantastic goal to uh set standards and basically pursue a particular deal of that district that's consistent, you know. Long-term planning goals to the city of Solana, really leveraging that downtown district as part of riverfront development, this is very exciting. Um I I think so far, everything we reviewed today looks great, there's only a couple of minor minor things like the uh the ten percent sort of limitation on repairs for catastrophic failures, things like that. Um I think we touched on. Uh marijuana versus alcohol establishments, and I think that's uh there's definitely a delineation between like package sales, where and over the counter marijuana sales, but when it comes to onsite consumption, I'm not sure if they're being legal. But we think that it would be fair or equitable to delineate between bar and onsite consumption. Will basically be the same thing, just flavor versus. Um those are the only comments I have.
Really?
Yeah, um, so. Do we go forward with the riverfront development and see what their recommendation is coming forward, do we move forward this first? Is there a way to find it, we're not going to see that report for. Another, what, nine months? Um and then we've got in May, knock on wood. Um new city manager coming on board, so it'd be nice to give the incoming city manager an opportunity to get up to. To speed with it as well. And I also think that. Moving, this is something we need to impart with, because I like I like the vision, um and based on. Many years that I have traveled through here and lived here, um Solana's gone through such a beautiful transition, you know. I mean, it used to be a gaudy place to drive through, and that's what you did, you drove through on your way to to somewhere else, and it's not like that now, as you as you drive through and. So I see this as um taking us that next step that what we need to do. As we continue to to grow and improve, um it's just a question of. What is the time?
Yeah, we've had that that discussion a a couple of times, both um internally as staff and and with the planning commission, and we we recognize that. This process that's going forward is is likely to come up with some recommendations and specific designs and land uses that will be recommended in that downtown area. As I mentioned though, we did, we did share it with them, there weren't any uh big red flags or any red flags that that came out uh from the our consultants. They they generally felt that, okay, you know, it's a, it's a good first step we're forward, but it's very likely that we will have to take another step. After the conclusion of that riverfront plan um to modify. Either the district that that we're talking about now, perhaps it would need to be tweaked one way or another with either some additional uses added or taken out, or moved from principal to conditional. or move from principal to conditional. And the boundaries, you know, are the boundaries appropriate? That too might potentially be affected nine months from now. And so, that's, yeah, that's the question. Is, I guess the thing that we balanced or tried to balance was, is the urgency there right now to go ahead and do something short-term versus waiting? And are we going to regret waiting? Or are we going to be smart to wait and have a clearer picture of what we're trying to accomplish?
One thing I would add to consideration is I think there's a couple of large parcels of property that are currently for sale within this area that we're looking at right now. And if we were to wait on this for, you know, another nine months or however long that may be, it'll be a continuation of the riverfront development process. Any use of that land that, you know, starts going into development before this, in fact, they're locked in and we can't change that. And that could completely go contrary to the overall goals of our riverfront redevelopment. So I'm personally beginning that we should take this first step now or as soon as possible. And this is a great starting point and a good to modify as needed to be brought by Johnson.
I really hope we move forward. No matter what anyone tries to do, there'll be opposition. And the opposition is always wait later, later, later. I'd much rather see, even if it has to be relatively small, first step, go now. We can learn from it. We may, all kinds of adjustments may need to be made. But if we wait until it's the opportune time, it'll never happen. So I very much hope we'll move forward. And I'd say, obviously try not to take the whole thing. Let's not eat the whole thing at once. Take a piece of it that can be handled well, do it well, and then move forward. But I hope that very much you will proceed forward.
I think it's a good starting point. There still needs to be a little tweaking done here and there. A little bit inclined to wait till we find out what comes out of that. Maybe more tweaking than we just don't want to have.
Mr. Mayor, the other, I guess the other advantage of potentially waiting is the people that we're working with in this area currently. You know, we've, we're trying to get them to work with us and participate in our process. And one of the things that you worry about is whether, going forward, that we create animosity from people who may become non-conforming uses. And so that's in the back of my mind also, that I can share with you.
All right, let's wrap this up, get ready for the next meeting.
Thank you, planning commission.
Thank you very much for all your work. We appreciate it.
And now we.
Congratulations. Rubbing it in, poking her. I bet I can't. What, so I'm good? Okay.
So.
I would like to call the March eighth, twenty twenty-three City Council Regular Meeting to Order. Would everyone please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, infinite and eternal.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Carey? Mr. Chilton?
Present.
Ms. Hutchings?
Here.
Ms. Parker? Mr. Nelson?
Oh, Mr. Nelson has an excused absence.
And Ms. Whackler?
Here.
You have a quorum. Mr. Cassidy?
Here.
Next item on the agenda is the approval of the Agenda and Consent Agenda. May I have a motion to approve the Agenda and Consent Agenda? Ms. Hutchings? May I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Chilton. Are there any changes to the Agenda and Consent Agenda? Vice Mayor Parker?
Thank you, Mayor Whitney. I would like to move to add Lay Down Resolution twenty twenty-three zero one five, approving the employment agreement between the City of Soldatna and the Soldatna City Manager, Jeanette Bauer, to the agenda as Agenda Item nine B four, and request that this be on the consent.
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Hutchings. Are there any objections to adding Resolution twenty twenty-three dash zero one five to the Agenda and Consent Agenda? Saying none, Resolution twenty twenty-three dash zero one five is added to the agenda. Will the clerk please read the Consent Agenda?
Approval of minutes, February third, twenty twenty-three, Special Council Meeting Minutes, February eighth, twenty twenty-three Council Meeting Minutes, February thirteenth, twenty twenty-three Special Council Meeting Minutes. Ordinance twenty twenty-three zero zero seven, increasing estimated revenues and appropriations by fifteen million one hundred thousand in the Soldatna Regional Sports Complex Capital Project Fund for the Field House General Obligation Bond Issuance, sponsored by the City Manager, and the public hearing will be on March twenty-second. Ordinance twenty twenty-three zero zero eight, increasing estimated revenues and appropriations by an amount not to exceed one million two hundred thousand in the Utility Specials Capital Improvements Fund for an anticipated Alaska Clean Water Fund Loan from the State of Alaska Department of Environmental Conservation for Phase Two of the Bio-Solids De-water Replacement Project, sponsored by the City Manager, public hearing on March twenty-second. Resolution twenty twenty-three zero one-two, authorizing a contract with CIC Inc. in the amount of three hundred and four thousand seven hundred fifty-five dollars for the downtown parking improvement project sponsored by the City Manager. Resolution twenty twenty-three zero one-three, authorizing the City Manager to apply to the State of Alaska Department of Environmental Conservation for a loan from the Alaska Clean Water Fund for Phase Two of the Bio-Solids De-watering Replacement Project. Lay Down Resolution twenty twenty-three zero one five, approving the employment agreement between the City of Soldatna and the Soldatna City Manager, Jeanette Bauer, sponsored by the Mayor and Vice Mayor Parker. Action Memorandum twenty twenty-three zero zero five, requesting, request for an excused absence from the March eighth, twenty twenty-three Special and Regular Council Meetings from Mr. Nelson. Action Memorandum twenty twenty-three zero zero six, request for an exec- excused absence from the April twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three Regular Council Meeting from Council Member Whackler. That is your consent agenda.
Thank you. Are there any public comments on any of the items just read by the clerk? For those participating through Zoom, please raise your hand if you would like to comment. App users by pressing the Raise Your Hand button and phone participants by dialing star nine on your telephone. Is there anyone here in the chamber that wishing to speak on any of those items just read by this city clerk under the Consent Agenda? Seeing none, we'll take a look at Zoom and see if we have any hands raised there. And I see none raised there. Moving right on, having no one wishing to speak, the approved of the Agenda and Consent Agenda is back before the council. Are there any council objections to approving the Agenda and Consent Agenda? Seeing none, the Agenda and Consent Agenda is approved by unanimous consent. Moving on to the next item on the agenda is presentation with prior notice, twenty twenty-three Project Homeless Connect Event Report by Jody Stewart. Ms. Stewart?
Ah, there we go. Good evening. Thank you so much to the City Council, Mayor Whitney. I always appreciate being able to come here and speak to you guys about Project Homeless Connect. So this is our annual report. First of all, I want to say thank you for your support in the Mini Grant Program. I heard the good news as I walked in today that we were one of the recipients. So we very much appreciate that. And when you see the data today, you'll see the impact that it makes. So let's get right into it. Some of you may or may not have been a participant in past presentations I've given. So this is kind of a catch-all up. Project Homeless Connect, this is what we do. It's a one-day event that we hold every year. COVID aside, we kind of start looking forward now. So we're not going to be doing data like we did last year, where it was a snapshot of kind of what COVID looked like. We're going back to our yearly trends. I also want to make sure that everybody's on the same page as far as our organization. So we have the Kenai Peninsula Continuum of Care. That is our regional planning body. What we do is we allow for funding to come in from our federal partners at HUD and such. And then underneath that, we have our Kenai Peninsula Health Homelessness Coalition, and they're focused on really that housing solutions. And then we have Project Homeless Connect, which is that very specific one-day event, and then our point in time count. So here, we're looking at post-pandemic, because that's where I'm calling it. Whether anybody agrees or not, I'm moving forward with it. So here are our participants. Our participants, you can see, is definitely more than we had last year. Not as many as we had in twenty twenty-one, but that was held at multiple locations, and it was just very different than what we've done now, which is holding at the Soldatna Sports Complex, which, again, thank you for allowing us to use that facility for this event. This slide here, you can see trends. I want to point out to disabilities. I pointed out every single time I make my presentation, because this is really the most vulnerable of the vulnerable. These are individuals that have either one or more disabilities. And you can see that that is an exceptionally high number, and it's been stereotypically high consistently through the years that we've had the event. Here, we know that in Alaska, most people do find themselves housed by couch surfing, staying in rooms, sleeping on the floor. Lots of people in the same residences. And in Alaska, we also know that many of these residences aren't necessarily made for these multiple people in the homes. We also know that there are lots of places that people are being housed that are not habitable. Now, this is a self-reflection statistic, meaning that they report this to us. This is from their perspective. And I can tell you that there are people that believe it's a home to be living in a lean-to with a tarp. I can tell you that people believe they have a home that are living in sheds. I can tell you that people believe that they have a home and they're living in their car. So this concept of, are you living in a place that's not habitable? Sometimes that is misconstrued, because they themselves view it, it's their home. And it's not that it's not habitable, I'm living there. And so that perspective is definitely an impact in this particular statistic. So for this statistic, everybody asks me, because they want to know, well, why is it that people are homeless? And you guys should have received the report ahead of time. And so when you get to page eight and nine, it talks about kind of why people are homeless. But there were so many people, forty-eight percent, that answered just kind of differently than any of the options that were there. A lot of fires, a lot of home fires this year. That is definitely different, higher than normal. Landlords filed bankruptcy, new. That's not something that we see normally. Landlord deceased, these issues with landlords is not something that we have seen in the past. So I just want to highlight a couple of those, that those are new scenarios, and really accounts for that huge spike there in the orange. We were over sixty percent for the first time that they'd ever participated. And I can tell you that when I went to the event, I was there for a few hours. Most of the people that I saw were not faces I had seen before. It was a huge population of new faces, and trust me, with my work with the Department of Corrections, I see a lot of faces, and I know a lot of people. And these were even people that I was not aware of. So this is a startling statistic, where this is their first experience joining in the event, and we're still at sixty percent. But more importantly, everybody felt that they were treated with respect and found that the event was helpful. So point in time, that's super important, because that gives us HUD funding, asks, where did you sleep on the date of one thirty twenty twenty-three? So we had our events the day after here locally, and this is best news. So we tried to kind of double dip, meaning that we're using one-day events to get everybody there, so that way we can count them without having to go to them. It works out pretty well for us, but we also know that we're still missing some folks. Some things to kind of take away from the report, these are just some highlights. You know, institutional, we don't have that many folks coming from institutions. Really, these are people that are coming out of temporary and permanent housing. Most of the folks that participated, this is not their first time being homeless. And then again, and I will keep saying this, cold weather shelter, we need it. People will use it if it's here. You, we build it, they will come, and we will serve a vast population and solve so many issues. Transportation, definitely an issue, and food right now is an issue. I would encourage everyone to go to the food bank, do some digging in your own pockets, because their shelves are very bare, and they need help. And when we put on an event like this, it depletes their stores, because we have folks coming and taking food left, right, and center at our event. And so since January, I know they are, they are still struggling. Again, this is just highlights. I'm just going to point out a couple of them. A lot of folks ask us, you know, about our veteran population. Sixteen percent were veterans. So that one, I know a lot of folks are interested in, because that is a highly identifiable and sometimes easier to get behind and rally behind population. We also know that eight percent had slept in a car the night before. It's been a cold winter. It's been lots of snow. People are sleeping in their cars. And for you guys, thirty-three percent said that their last permanent address was here in the city of Soldatna. So that's thirty-three percent of your population that is now sitting homeless. Building off of that, to give some context in our housing situations, it's really interesting to know that our minimum wage is ten dollars and thirty-four cents, but our standard wage to be able to afford a two-bedroom apartment has to be twenty-four dollars and thirty-two cents. This isn't a fancy apartment, it's a simple two-bedroom. The need for multiple jobs for an individual to be able to afford it, it's crucial. So they would have to work a minimum of ninety-four hours to afford a two-bedroom, or seventy-two hours in a work week to afford a one-bedroom. And that's here in the state. This is local statistics as well. So here's what it looks like, and I apologize for how small it is, but I can tell you, when you're looking at all of the communities in the state, it's definitely disturbing. And so for the Kenai Peninsula specifically, twenty dollars and sixty-two cents for that two-bedroom apartment is what you have to make per hour. I can tell you, as a state employee, I don't make much more than that. And I think I got a pretty darn good job. That's, that's a tough pill to swallow. So we also, in the month of January, the hundred percent community conducted a survey for the entire month of January. It was, hopefully, some of you participated. It was digital, it was paper-based as well, and this is some of the survey results dedicated to housing. So those that were surveyed, which were hundreds of surveys that came through, three percent said that they did not have a safe place to reside during the winter. Fifty-eight percent said that they would absolutely use a cold-weather shelter, surprise, surprise. And the good news is, fifty-five percent had heard of our Nikiski Shelter of Hope. So when I had given this presentation to Kenai on the twenty-second, this is the statistics for our Shelter of Hope. I would defer to Leslie for today's data, because I did not write it down, and I did not bring it with me, and it's on the Assembly's presentation, so I do apologize for that. But more importantly, what I want to put in context, because I want to say it was seventy-two-hundred? Seventy-two-hundred bed nights? Seventy-two-hundred bed nights, as of today. Kudos to us as a community, we have housed people for seventy-two-hundred bed nights. We can't do this without our community. I love here, I mean, we are so awesome, we really are. And the folks that help out, this makes this place a great place to live. And we couldn't do this without the cash and in-kind donations. And just want to say thank you for allowing me to speak today, and I am more than happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions from the council? Mr. Chilton?
Thank you for all the fantastic work you and your organization do to put this on every year. I know it makes a tremendous difference in the community. My question would be specific to the cold-weather emergency shelter. The shelter out north that was established last year, do you have any portion of that allocated for emergency cold-weather use, or is that more strictly oriented towards medium-term housing? And then you're still looking for a separate facility for cold-weather shelter purposes?
We are looking for a separate cold-weather shelter. You know, it is a great facility in Nikiski, and there are going to be moments where, yes, emergency housing does take effect, and there are certain people that are housed for that purpose. But predominantly, we need a cold-weather shelter. The shelter in Nikiski is not the end-all-to-be-all answer. It is just a small nugget of an overall problem. And so I absolutely believe wholeheartedly that we need multiple cold-weather shelters across the peninsula, as well as between Soldatna and Kenai, because when we're asking people to be transported from point A to point B, let me tell you, Nikiski's way out there, and they're not going to do it.
Okay, and then my second question would be, have you observed any trends or comments from people coming through Project Homeless Connect that have been affected by nine-month rentals or seasonal lease limitations?
So yes, we get that all the time. Anecdotally, I can tell you that individuals are sometimes housed from the months of October through about March consistently, maybe April, April might be pushing it some. And they know that they can find a place to stay. And then they know that from April-ish to May, definitely through August, they have no place to go. And we have people that make the decision that, well, that, I guess I'm going to go camping for those months, and hope for the weather to be good enough to do that, and they'll be in our campgrounds. We have folks that will be camping on the beach. We will have folks living in a lot of seasonal kind of employment. So that's where you will see folks getting jobs with some charter organizations, like where they have, you fly out to someplace, and so they'll keep you housed while you're working there. They get those types of jobs, so very seasonal, and that's kind of where the focus winds up being. And that's the transition of this population into a whole new population. So we have folks that have been housed for that temporary time, that winter months. Then they don't have housing, and so then they disperse, and then we have a whole new group come in, thinking that they're going to find a place to live, and realize that all the rentals are taken for seasonal purposes, and not for like actually year-round rentals. And it's, it's just a conundrum that I have yet to figure out.
And do you feel like there's any trend with that, or is it pretty much status quo? I know this has been a longstanding issue, or is it?
It is longstanding, it is not getting better. Would I say it's getting worse? I'd say it's probably about the same, but it's definitely not getting better.
Thank you.
Neil, Ms. Whackler?
When you're talking about cold-weather shelters, would your wish list or goal be something that would be an emergency housing, something that's just a nightly sort of thing, or something more like centers that are like Nikiski in multiple locations? Or is that kind of two different things?
So housing is a multifaceted problem, which requires a multifaceted approach. There is, I believe, a place for shelter, that is, you come in that night, you are sheltered for that night, you leave during the day, and if you need that shelter again that night, you come back that night. It is more of that revolving door kind of shelter, that's kind of that cold-weather concept. You know, if the weather is cold, it's going to be used more often than if the weather is nice. That has its place. Housing first has its place. The Nikiski Shelter of Hope has its place. All of these have their place, and we need all of them in order to have a full, well-rounded response to individuals that are living on our streets.
And currently, we don't have any cold-weather emergency shelters, so is that correct?
Not, not in the definition of a true cold-weather shelter, no.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the council? Ms. Hutchings?
Could you tell me how many you would need to house for a cold-weather shelter? That is an interesting question. I'm going to defer to Leslie. Do you have a number?
Our best estimate was, when we did the survey before, was that we would have thirty to forty people per night.
So for those that may be on Zoom that didn't hear Leslie, thirty to forty people per night. And, but that data, I'm going to say, is a few years old now. So with that given, you know, I would estimate, you know, maybe a ten percent increase to that?
Any other questions? Seeing none, thank you very much for your presentation, and thank you for all the work you do for our community.
Thank you guys so much, I really appreciate talking to you.
Next agenda item is public comments and presentations. Other than those appearing on the agenda, three minutes per speaker, twenty minutes aggregate. Are there any members of the public who would like to speak on any item not appearing on the agenda? For those participating through Zoom, please raise your hand if you would like to comment. App users by pressing the Raise Your Hand button and phone participants by dialing star nine on your telephone. Anyone here in the chambers wishing to speak on any item not on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll take a look at Zoom. And I see no hands raised there. So moving on to the next agenda item is Assembly and Legislative Reports. Are there any representatives from the borough or the state in attendance who would like to speak? For those participating through Zoom, please raise your hand if you would like to comment. App users by pressing the Raise Your Hand button and phone participants by dialing star nine on your telephone. Any, well, I don't see any borough or state representatives here, and looking at Zoom, I see no hands raised there. So we'll move on to the next item, which is Administrator Reports, and that would be the Kenai Peninsula Homeless Coalition Request for Shower Trailer Donation. A report from the administration.
Thank you, Mayor Whitney. I am, we included in your packet on page ten is a letter from the Kenai Peninsula Homeless Coalition, specifically requesting that the city consider a donation of an existing shower and hand-washing bathroom trailer that we have. And I place this on your agenda under Administrative Reports, so that I could bring this request to you and speak to it more broadly, and hopefully get some direction from the council in terms of what, what you want us to consider and bring forward at a subsequent meeting for your consideration, if this is something you want to consider. So as you can see, the Kenai Peninsula Housing Coalition is a 501(c)(3). They serve members of our community experiencing homelessness. And we purchased a shower and bathroom trailer in October of twenty twenty using federal funds for the COVID relief. And if you can remember, at the time, a lot of the public health guidance was focused on surfaces. We were buying the- We were buying those fogging machines and hand washing was obviously very important. And this was an eligible purchase with those federal funds intended from our perspective to support ongoing use of some of our big public spaces, whether that was at the park, some of the big events. And the idea of a mobile trailer that could be moved from location to location, we thought added flexibility to ensure that it could also be used for downstream events like, for example, Project Homeless Connect. We had some conversations with the food bank and Love Inc at the time about how else could we use this in the future if this was something that we moved forward with. So we did procure that trailer, it came in December of twenty twenty. And it's functional, it's ready to go, it's stored at the sports center. We haven't had a lot of use out of it. As COVID, as our recovery progressed, we investigated a few different options. For example, we had an engineer do some preliminary design work and cost estimating on what would it take to create a permanent foundation if we were, for example, going to put this shower trailer at at one of our campgrounds. In my opinion, the the cost of doing that would potentially have been prohibitive. It was about a hundred thousand dollars to build that foundation and additional utility work to provide that foundation in that specific location. So we we didn't move forward in that regard. And I will say over the past several months, there have been a few different entities that have expressed some curiosity or interest about the shower trailer. So we've had conversations with the Keen Eye Peninsula Homeless Coalition. We have given them a tour, shared kind of the designs, and I think even may have taken a trip out to Nikiski to see if this would be a compatible, incompatible location for the shower trailer. They're requesting a donation, and our code, chapter two point four eight covers this topic, so disposition of surplus property. And it allows, in the case of an item valued more than twenty five thousand, which this definitely is, we purchased this trailer for approximately a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. It's got two sides, both with bathrooms, toilets, and then four showers apiece, so it's a pretty significant trailer piece of equipment. But the council, for those items valued in excess of twenty five thousand, can designate the item as surplus to our existing city needs and can direct the disposal of that in a few different ways. One could be a competitive sale that might look like the auction we do with some of our other items. The council can also designate a sole source sale or donation, including to a nonprofit. So really, I wanted to bring this to you. It's in, we checked with our city attorney, it's in compliance with the federal regulations of the grant that we used to acquire this that we would be able to designate it for disposal. And in this particular request, it would be viewed as disposing it in similar intent to to what we acquired it in the first place. Because we did anticipate that a ancillary benefit would be supporting this population, our community, and some of these community events. I'd be happy to answer more questions. As I mentioned, this is just to bring this item forward and potentially get some guidance from the council. There's not a decision to be made tonight. But I look forward to answering questions of the council if there are any.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I thank you for the comments made and just reading. I'd very much be interested in us donating this. Having this and not using it, to me, is unfortunate. And again, to me, it is, I'm not going to say a sin, but I would say that. But I hope that the council will decide, move ahead. Unquestionably, this is exactly what it should be used for. When we listen to the numbers here, we heard tonight, a very significant amount of people are definitely from our jurisdiction. Probably the number is actually larger, because some have already moved out, and so anyway, I hope that the council will direct you to move forward and that we will make this a donation. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions from the council?
Thank you, I I appreciate administration bringing this forward. This was a piece of equipment that was paid for pretty much entirely by the Fed. It's has a lot of potential to do good in our community, and it's unfortunate to hear that it's been underutilized, but we have an opportunity here to put it to use for those that I think could most benefit, most greatly benefit from it. I don't see any reason why we would have to wait on this, so I would move to classify this equipment as surplus and direct administration to donate this equipment to homeless. What's the organization name? The Keen Eye Peninsula Homeless Coalition.
Can we take a brief at ease? I've got the code in front of me and I can consult. Just can we take a brief at ease? I've got that section of code in front of me, and I'd want to review that to see if that complies with the process.
It's already been set. Okay, Mr. Mayor. On evaluation, that does require a resolution. If there's no opposition, I'd like to withdraw that, and I would intend to bring a resolution back to the council at our following meeting.
All right, that will work just fine with Mr. Carey. And we'll have that resolution at the next meeting. Okay. Vice Mayor Parker.
Thank, thank you, Mayor Whitney. City Manager Queen, you mentioned that there were other interest groups that had approached the city. What other groups have come forth expressing interest in this facility?
Thank you. Through the mayor, Vice Mayor Parker, the two other entities that I think potentially I've had casual informal discussions with, one was commercial, so it would be industry based, the, you know, the industry oftentimes needs facilities like this, especially when they're doing, you know, things like a turnaround, or there's a lot, a big excess number of employees coming in from out of the area. So we had an informal inquiry, we shared the same information we shared with the homeless coalition, and that was one entity that did not move forward in in any kind of way that I brought a formal request forward. The other would be municipalities, so I've had discussions with other municipal managers. And there are many communities, particularly ones with, for example, cruise ship traffic that see a very significant increase of public population in their communities on very distinct points of time. So I had a conversation with the city manager from Rangel, actually, who was looking to acquire something similar to this. And before I could respond to his informal request, they ended up finding a different solution. I think they may have found something on eBay. But that would be a different example of an entity that may have an interest in acquiring something like this, and potentially something from the city of Soldatna, given that we already have it, it's available. And I think ordering these, sometimes I think we experience about a three month lead time, I don't know what the lead time would be currently. But I do think there's potential for commercial value, someone would, there is commercial value to this. However, as I mentioned, the code gives the council broad discretion.
So during the presentation from Jody, she mentioned the number of of people that came to event in January, and there were thirty three here from Soldatna. So if this was something that was to be donated by the city of Soldatna to Project Homeless Connect, would this facility be located here in Soldatna?
Through the mayor to Vice Mayor Parker, I would need to defer to Project Homeless Connect, and I know they've got representatives here. They'd be in a better position to answer that.
Yes, if somebody from there could please step forward and state your name and address for the record.
Thank you, Mayor, Tim Navarre. I'm the chair of the Homeless Coalition at this time, and we're looking all over the central peninsula. We actually have more opportunity along K Beach between Keen Eye and Soldatna. The idea is the the clients that would use this would be a combination of the cold weather shelter and also in the summertime, those that would benefit Soldatna and Keen Eye and this surrounding areas, kind of a tent city, if you want to call it, where they would have a place where they could get showers and bathroom facilities. But some of them, some of those clients like to live independently and feel that way in a tent. So in the summertime, it would, it would kind of handle those clients, and if we're lucky in the right location, it would be the additional bathroom facilities and shower facilities for a cold weather shelter. But not necessarily Soldatna, so I would hope that you would give us the ability to to look, because nothing against Soldatna, but you have a geographical area and not a lot of empty open space or buildings that would utilize what we're looking at.
Can I do a follow up? Thank, thank you, Mr. Navarre. So at this point, you haven't identified a location, if this were to be donated and you were to receive it come June of this year, you don't have a location to put this in at this point.
You know, one of the things, and I think Jody talked about it and others, you know, we got our first shelter out in Nikiski, there's some extra property next door, we've tried to work with those owners and look at that. But the one thing we don't want is a one size fits all type of a location, or you have the distance and who, so we have to be someplace in Keen Eye, Soldatna, or in between for this kind of cold weather and tent city, if you want to call it a controlled, you know. But that way it gives them some space of their own with the services without being a burden on the business community. That sometimes people come in and say, can I use your bathroom or use them for the other thing, so. We really want to fix that one client base. And and that's what this facility would, at this time, work out the best, but we're looking, we have identified a couple locations, they're not finalized along K Beach. We're working on the logistics of whether it it can happen, so right now K Beach seems to have the best options for us.
Any other questions from Mr. Navarre?
Sorry, eighty eighty percent of the population that we are served by Project Homeless is from the Keen Eye, Soldatna general area, so. I just don't want to see it like down in Nielchik or way out in Sterling where it's not going to be used by by the folks that that need it. So, thank you.
Right, and if I could, just real quick, I think the the other services, like the food bank and that food service and Love Inc's, you know, current headquarters and things like that. That's the other thing that, because the success that Love Inc has had out at the Nikiski Shelter of Hope is because you work with the clients, you want to help them and move them on and move them to the next stage. That's what we want for even this cold water shelter in this tent is to be able to work with them and show them the services and the and the other things that are available to them, to hopefully move them to be more independent and not need our our services.
Any other questions for Mr. Navarre? Thank you. Any other comments from the council? Seeing none, we'll move on to the next agenda item, which is public hearings. First one is Resolution twenty twenty three dash zero one one, authorizing the issuance of a letter of non objection to the Marijuana Control Board for license licensee renewal. Croy's Enterprises LLC, a retail marijuana shop doing businesses, Pine Street Cannabis Company, introduced by the city manager. May I have a motion to adopt?
I'll move to adopt Resolution twenty twenty three zero one one.
Thank you, Mr. Chilson, may I have a second? Thank you, Ms. Hutchings. A report from the administration.
Thank you, Mayor Whitney. There's a memo in the packet from City Clerk Blankenship. This is a routine renewal of an existing license, and the Soldatna missile code procedures require that it be renewed by the council after a public hearing and a resolution. As detailed in the memo, this, there is no objection from any of the city of Soldatna departments that reviewed this extension, this renewal, nor is there any objection from the Keen Eye Peninsula Borough when it comes to tax obligations, therefore, we recommend to pass. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak on this item? For those participating through Zoom, please raise your hand if you would like to comment. App users by pressing the raise your hand button and phone participants by dialing star nine on your telephone. Is there anyone here in the chamber wishing to speak on Resolution twenty twenty three dash zero one one? Seeing none, I'll take a look at Zoom, and looking at Zoom, I see no hands raised. Having no one wishing to speak, the item is back before the council. Are there any council comments? Seeing none, we'll call for the roll. Call for the vote.
Carey?
Yes.
Chilson?
Yes.
Parker? Hutchings?
Yes.
Whackler?
Yes.
Cassidy?
Yes.
You have five yes votes.
Resolution twenty twenty three dash zero one one passes on a five zero vote with one absent. Next item on the agenda is Ordinance twenty twenty three dash zero zero five, amending chapter twelve point two eight of the Soldatna City Code to specify standards for issuance of park use permits and conduct in city park inner, or city parks, introduced by the city manager. Just a quick comment on this. There is other items that are kind of tied into this, other resolutions and and items before the council, so they're all kind of worked together and a part of the same same. So may I have a motion to enact?
I'll move to enact.
I move the adoption of ordinance twenty twenty three double oh five, amending chapter twelve point two eight of the city code to specify standards for issuance of park use permits and conduct in city parks.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Chilson. A report from the administration.
Thank you, Mayor Whitney. As you mentioned, this is one of three pieces of legislation that are related and and interreferencing each other in the packet tonight, and it's the culmination of our review of really comprehensive review of city code and policies as they relate to the public's reservation and use of our our public spaces, focusing on the stage at and Soldatna Creek Park. I'll ask the city clerk if our city attorney, Brooks Chandler, is online. He was going to be joining us by Zoom. But I'll speak briefly to these three pieces of legislation and our approach to bringing forward recommendations. Okay, brief pause, one second if I might.
Mr. Chandler, are you on the phone? Mr. Chandler, are you on the phone and available? We'll be at a short at ease here while we try to raise Mr. Chandler. We'll be at a short add easier while we try to raise Mr. Chandler. Oh, technology is great when it works.
Oh, made your choice.
My anniversary and my mother's birthday.
Well, that's when Milo comes home. Well, my mom's birthday was just the fifteenth. My brother's is fifteen and mine's is second. Milo's is January twentieth. So I was in, um.
So you were speaking to.
Yep. So I went to uh. Disneyland with my grandson and coming back and say. Stopping in Portland because I thought a lot of family there, okay?
Sure.
So I said to my brother, I said, let's get together. And he said, maybe we should have a dream party. So. And uh, there were eighteen of us and my sister who lives in the Bay area. On her way to Seattle anyway. This week, so she came up and then my brother. Phoenix came up. That's my nephew and his wife and their girls. This is my. That's my um. Niece's kids. And that's my niece. Mary and my sister-in-law. That's my biological granddaughter. And then my. Sister-in-law, my brother.
Well, those are very bad, yeah.
Well, that's my biological daughter, Kelly, and her husband Snesson. And my brother Patrick and my sister Sandy and me and my husband. And then Ronan, who's married to Mary. His family's from Wrangell, pardon? Well, so. Show you this picture. So Saturday, so here I am with my siblings. Oldest, youngest. Number two. Not really. I think there's some, I think my sister, you can see that resembles to my sister-in-law. Yeah, my brother Jeffrey, he was um. Down syndrome guy.
A bone is crumpled up.
Uh, so. Katerina, she had a. Tryout and so. This was Saturday morning.
Mr. Chandler, are you there?
That's her grandma and that's her grandma.
Mr. Chandler, are you there?
Yes, here I am. I've been promoted, it says. I've been promoted.
Okay.
Okay, welcome, uh, welcome, Brooks. Thanks for joining us. Uh. I was just starting to give a report and I was going to speak to the, really briefly to the overall approach we took. And briefly cover the reasons for these three different pieces of legislation, the two ordinances that are in your packet, as well as the resolution. Updating the administrative policy. Um, and let you know that Mr. Chandler, myself and Parks Director Carmichael are here also to answer questions, but. Generally, uh, after we committed to doing a big comprehensive review of our park use policy and codes. We approached this project with a few things in mind, and I shared these at the parks. Uh, work session we gave, but I wanted to share them again tonight. Uh, we approached this project wanting our public spaces to be safe and welcoming. We recognize that this park in particular is a public forum that accommodates a really diverse use of events within our community. And we had the sense that the public and our council had wanted that public use to continue. We wanted to implement best practices when it came to developing policy and code in that that language be clear, easily understood. And that it be legally defensible and able to be administered by our staff. So it, it was important when we came across existing language in our code or policy that. Caused confusion or could cause difficulty interpreting or applying it. We flagged that language and, and wanted to update it. And ultimately, we wanted our recommendations to be responsive to the feedback we got from the community, of which we had quite a lot. Or in the cases where ultimately something that was suggested didn't come forward as one of our recommendations, we wanted to be able to explain why that was the case, why it wasn't something that. We thought was particularly um. Uh, able to be done, done by the city moving forward. So I'll focus first on this first ordinance in the packet, Ordinance twenty twenty-three oh oh five. It amends a portion of our code dealing with uh, parks themselves and permitting and use. And a couple of highlights in this legislation, um, I will point out also that both ordinances were drafted by uh, City Attorney Chandler. In consultation with staff, so uh, depending on the type of questions that might arise, I, I might defer to him to answer some of those questions. But this first ordinance focuses on our parks code. It expands on an existing definition of disorderly conduct. It includes new definitions for sexual conduct and sexual activities. And these things would uh, potentially form the basis of denying a permit if the city anticipated that these. Were going to be incorporated as part of a use of the, the park that was reserved. This ordinance also removes existing language in the code, as I mentioned, uh, that is vague or outdated or would be difficult to enforce. Um, it's a problem because when we have a lack of clear standards, um, different people might uh, not understand. What is expected of the city staff or what's allowable. And so, for example, there's phrases that we're proposing be removed from the code. Things like uh. Language that says that use of the park will not unreasonably interfere with or detract from the general public enjoyment. That's really a statement that. Doesn't give us as staff any guidelines uh, or the ability to enforce consistently. So phrase, phrases like that, uh, we flagged as potentially. Problematic in the code and should be uh, removed. Uh. The other thing that this does is uh, reference what the second ordinance does, which is reference sections regarding um, obscenity and lewdness. So the second ordinance that's included the packet is not specific to parks code. It's in Title Nine of our code and it would apply broadly. It really establishes these definitions were, which are important in the context of this uh, recommendation of harmful to minors and obscene. And I, I might defer to, to Brooks to explain a little bit more so when we get to that ordinance, but generally our approach was. Uh, to include uh, existing state and federal law, existing US uh, Supreme Court case law. And bring it into our code so that we have more locally adopted standards referencing those existing. Standards for obscenity and lewdness, but within the context of the Saldana Municipal Code. So a lot of the language that's in that second ordinance, number twenty twenty-three oh oh six. Comes right from that case law. Um, it uh, is, as I mentioned, is not limited to parks. It would apply more broadly in the city. And as I said, it would establish, attempt to establish local provisions uh, relating to protecting the public, not just minors, but the public as well, from being exposed to. Lude or obscene conduct while also protecting First Amendment speech rights of individuals to express themselves freely in our, our community. So that's the balance of that ordinance and, and that's what that uh, Title Nine Amendment would hopefully accomplish for us. The third piece of legislation is it more administrative and, and policy recommendations that came from our own staff as well as discussion at the Parks Board. And these are things um, intended to improve the public's access to information about what's happening in the park. Uh, so that make it easy for folks to know if there are scheduled events, get more information about those events. And that's really an update of our policy that would promote um. Uh, online reservation calendar, better signage at the park, as well as scheduled blackout days where there's no events happening at the park. So. Even if someone wanted to set up a recurring play date or lunch date, uh, they wouldn't have to check the calendar knowing that on certain days of the week, there are no programmed events or scheduled performances, uh. Reservations. So these three pieces of legislation together uh, reflect our, our best effort to kind of address some of the questions and uh, update our code. Um, as I mentioned, we had a work session uh, in January at the Parks and Rec Advisory Board. Where we went through kind of this approach and, and got some feedback, got some public testimony. They then held a meeting on January twenty-fourth where they, where they considered uh, the ordinance oh oh five related to the Parks Code update. As well as the resolution updating the park policy. So they. Considered both of those documents and ultimately voted to recommend approval of those to the council. We did not take the ordinance oh oh six to the Parks Board, the lewdness ordinance, as I felt it was outside the purview of the Parks Board. To provide comment or advice on a, a matter that felt um, fell broadly within your scope citywide, not just limited to, to parks. Um, and with that, I'd be happy to um, pause and as I mentioned, Mr. Carmichael, myself and Mr. Chandler are available. Uh, to answer questions at the appropriate time. Um, but we have in front of us this initial ordinance, uh, twenty twenty-three oh oh five, and it begins on page forty of the packet. And I will conclude my remarks at this time. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak on this item? For those participating through Zoom, please raise your hand if you would like to comment. App users by pressing the Raise Your Hand button and phone participants by dialing star nine on your telephone. Is there anyone here in the audience wishing to speak on Ordinance twenty twenty-three dash zero zero five? Seeing none, I'll take a look at Zoom and. I see no hands raised under Zoom. Having no one wishing to speak on this item, it is back before the council. Are there any council comments? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote.
I have, Mayor Whitney. So um, based on some comments that we received. Emails that we received, I reached out to. The city manager and asked her with respect to Ordinance twenty twenty-three oh oh five. Um. The sexual conduct number five touching of sex organs and anus, whether clothed or unclothed. oneself and one person. And if there was a possibility of. Changing that because when. Sometimes when I'm clothed and I'm out in public, sometimes I might need to scratch or make an adjustment and so is this. Proper and. So you were going to have a conversation with this. For city attorney and can you respond to that?
Sure, and, and uh, through the mayor to Vice Mayor Parker, I might ask Brooks to comment and the specific. Uh, question relates to um, language both in the definition of sexual conduct, which is on page forty-one of the packet. As well as specified sexual activities. And we mentioned that um, or I, I observed that in the definition of specified sexual activities. Um, it includes this language that fondling or erotic touching uh, can be prohibited and that same language. Fondling or erotic is not included in the definition on uh, earlier in that section of sexual conduct. Brooks, can you comment on whether that would be an appropriate amendment or inclusion?
Uh, yes, I can. Good evening, everybody. Um. The current wording um. In the definition of sexual conduct. Does reference touching and it, my opinion, it would be um. Improved because it would eliminate the possibility for. Uh, less objectionable behavior. Um, if. The wording fondling or erotic touching or fondling or erotic was added immediately in front of touching. Because that would then eliminate the possibility that somebody would be um, relatively unintentionally uh, you know, violating the ordinance. By engaging in conduct that most of the community would not find objectionable.
Did that answer your question?
Um, yes, and do you have uh? So I need to again find it in uh. In here in order. Section one. So under section one. Sexual, sexual conduct. To add after number five. Fondling or. Erotic touching of human genitals. And then it would continue on. To make it more specific, so that would be a proposed amendment.
Okay, uh, where is that located at again?
That is in section one.
Okay.
Under definitions. Sexual conduct.
Okay. Which paragraph?
Under set, the definition of sexual conduct under section one.
Okay.
So go to section one, go to sexual conduct definition means acts of, and then number five. So there's four definitions and then there's number five. And it would be to amend it to say fondling or erotic touching of.
Okay. That's your motion? Is there a second?
Yes.
Is there a second? Did everyone understand the motion? And.
Okay.
Mr. Carrie, thank you. Mr. Carrie's second discussion.
I, uh, Mr. Mayor, I would just say that based on the comments that we received, this would just. Help to make it clear that it's when you're actually fondling or engaged in erotic touching. It's not when I'm got a wedgie and I'm a. It's not when I'm got a wedgie and I'm adjusting and somebody thinks you're doing something wrong. So just to help provide clear definition.
Ms. Whackler.
Could we further add information, add context to that with intent to direct attention to yourself or your genitalia? Even more specifically, performed with the intention of arousing the perpetrator or the person to whom.
Where are you? What, is that the same number five that she has already addressed?
Yeah, sorry. That was, I thought we were in discussion.
So would that would be a separate amendment? We could take and deal with one and then, or you would change it to?
So you wanted to change it from touching of sex organs or anus into replacing that with fondling?
Adding.
Or adding?
Adding fondling or erotic touching.
Adding as a number six?
No, a number five. Number five, at the beginning of number five. Adding the words fondling or erotic. And then the rest of it stays as it is.
Fondly or erotic touching of this.
Yeah.
So that in itself is raising intent to, I guess, is I am amenable to that, I guess.
Any other discussion? Saying none, we'll call for the vote on the amendment.
Whackler?
Yes.
Kerry?
Yes.
Chilton?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Hutchings?
Yes.
Cassidy?
Yes.
You have five yes votes.
The amendment to item five under sexual conduct, it passes on a five zero fold. Any other discussion? Vice Mayor Parker.
Sorry. I do read the emails that I get and the comments that people provide, and I, I appreciate all of the feedback that we have received from the community. One of the other areas that was identified is under the definition of specified anatomical areas and what it means. And I had a concern about female breasts below the point immediately above the top of the, I might not say the word correctly. Yeah. And as particularly now as we're getting into award season, we see people coming down the red carpet and we have ladies that have dresses that are split down the middle. And you can see the sides of their breasts. You can't see the whole breast most of the time. So is this something that we need to, would these people be in violation of our dress code if I wore a dress that was split down the middle and I did not have a bra on? And so I, again, I asked our city manager and she said she was going to check with our attorney.
Through the mayor, Brooks, I'll kick this one to you as well, if you want.
I'm sure. So I I definitely have seen pictures from, whether they're from awards ceremonies or exactly in what context they're taken. I think most of the times they're taken in a private venue that there does seem to be a trend toward greater exposure of the female breast. And there's definitely a likelihood that some of that attire would violate this ordinance as currently written. Whether that's a concern to, you know, Saldana or not, I guess would be your call. My, my other comment would be, of course, is that enforcement of the ordinance, enforcement of any ordinance involves a, you know, a certain degree of discretion. So it's fairly, you know, it's, it would be better if, if you're trying to tinker with it, in, in my view, it would be almost better to eliminate reference to the female breast, because then that would just be off the table, so to speak, as a point of enforcement. This point immediately above the top of the areolas is definitely going to create some kind of gray area and some potential that somebody wearing what they think is an appropriate dress would end up being cited, although I think the chances of that would be pretty small. But you know, that is, it's definitely a trend and whether it will continue or not, I don't know. But and what you want to do about it is sort of up to you. From an attorney's standpoint, you would hope that people wouldn't go overboard in writing in applying this particular language.
Thank you. I, I don't have any proposed amendments at this time to, to change that. It's been 50 years since we've made changes to this part of the code. As we implement this, I can see that in the future, there's going to be adjustments that are going to have to be made. And this could be an area where we maybe need to make an adjustment, but I don't have a proposed amendment at this time.
Any other discussion from the council? Ms. Hutchings?
Well, commenting on that same line, you see people playing volleyball or whatever else in the park, in all of our parks. And so if some young lady or young man are wearing bathing suits of any sort, and the bathing suit doesn't stay in place, are we going to be arresting them?
Through the mayor to Councilwoman Hutchings, I think Brooks's point about enforcement is a good one, and it's a, it's good for me to expand on, because the goal with the language of the ordinances was not to anticipate and prescribe every single, every single possible action, but to give the staff really boundaries, guidance on the types of things that could be enforceable as a minor offense. And so this section we're talking about, which is effectively nudeness, it's describing what is, what is naked or what is nude in public. It falls under disorderly conduct if it was intentionally exposed with reckless disregard for the offensive and insulting nature. So that pairing together gives us, whether it's, you know, a police officer that's responding to a complaint or a parks employee, that gives us the discretion to first, you know, try to decide, was it one of these anatomical areas? And was it intentionally exposed with that disregard? So those together, I think, with the staff we have educated on this, this new ordinance, if it's ultimately adopted, means that we'd be making the right decisions by the, by the community in that regard, and exercising discretion for these inadvertent or unintended consequences when those cases apply. Thank you.
Mr. Chilton?
Kind of expanding on that, it does seem like there is a lot of content in here pertaining to sexual conduct that is, like you said, it's, it's on a spectrum and there's a lot of opportunity for discretion to apply. And I have some concerns about putting our employees in positions where they're forced to be arbitrators of what is sexual conduct and what isn't, and what was the intent behind the action or what was not the intent. And that's just kind of concerning that they could potentially be put in these situations where, you know, there might be conflict arising. I guess, would you anticipate parks employees having any hand enforcement in this, strictly police? I mean, what are your thoughts on putting our employees in positions where they have to be that person that's making that discretionary call and how the enforcement would be conducted?
Thank you, Councilmember Chilton, through the mayor. So the ordinance does authorize parks employees to enforce park regulations within those, those properties. We have minor offenses that apply broadly throughout the code. And often what that looks like is the employee in the relevant department gets an initial complaint. They may have been the one that observed it themselves. They might do some initial research and follow up, talk to folks. But we also partner very closely with the police department when we in fact issue minor offenses. So we work through the police department. They've got access to the court-approved system for delivering minor offenses. So ultimately, it would be a partnership regardless of which employee first observed the conduct or received a complaint. In terms of your other question about putting employees in that position, I think my perspective is that this code provides much more precise guidance than what we currently have. So I think it, it's an improvement in the respect that it leaves much less open to interpretation than our current code does. We've got that current language I mentioned earlier, as well as some general language in the current code under the enforcement section, actually, that currently says that park attendants shall enforce the public safety, health and welfare, that it not be adversely affected. That's an entirely overly broad statement that needs to come out. So I think I wouldn't in particular have concerns if this were to be adopted, that it would put our employees in a difficult position. If anything, I think they respond to concerns. They work well with their supervisors and the police department. And, and really, if, if there were any of these activities, it would not be that difficult for us to get our heads together and decide, was this a clear violation or not? Thank you.
Ms. Whackler?
I would love to hear if Chief Meek had some input on how he sees the language of this being enforced and whether or not he thinks that officers themselves would be able to enforce it as written.
Go ahead, Chief.
Thank you, sir. As it's been stated before, there is certain amounts of discretion that law enforcement officers have at their disposal. And in something like this, one of the things you're going to really look into is the intent of the offense. Most of what our job is trying to get that voluntary compliance with any laws or ordinances that are written. Voluntary compliance is simple as, hey, this is what our ordinance says, we need you to abide by that. After that moment, now an education initiative has been, has been given, stating them what the issue is with the law. So we would be looking at, okay, if you didn't know, now you've been informed. Once you've been informed, well, discretion once again takes place. And are we going to remove you from the property or are we going to take enforcement action as is? I do not see an issue with enforcing this whatsoever. It does clean up a lot of the vague language that's been involved previously. And then it comes down to who saw the offense, what the intent was. As I think, as Ms. Hutchinson said, you know, an accident is an accident. There needs to be intent involved. And with that intent, then we start into, was it a profane action? We need to do an immediate enforcement action on, or was it something that we just need to simply educate on? Does that, that is, that answer your question?
I think so. I mean, there's two different things that we want to talk about today, one of them being the, the one that's citywide, that has an actual like minor offense, that has a ticket associated with it. One of the things I was concerned is language in here being sexual conduct, being also like illegal in other ways. So not necessarily just in the context of park use, but it just in general being illegal. So I just wanted your input on the enforceability as written. Thank you.
Any other questions or discussion? Mr. Chilton?
Looking at the section for specified sexual activities, a lot of the very detailed listing there definitely would be a point for public display. And my understanding is the vast majority of that would already be illegal under state statute. So I guess I'm just looking for some additional clarity on what exactly, what expanded protections are we going to be offering through this that are not already protected through state statute?
Thank you, Councilmember Chilton, through the mayor. Brooks, can I ask you to expound on the language as it relates to existing statutes?
Yes, I, yes, for sure. It's a very good question. So this definition of specified sexual activities contains quite a bit more specifically described conduct than is under Alaska's criminal statutes, which have an indecent exposure crime, but that's really limited to exposing human genitals. There is you know, not the, the laundry list of specific acts stated here that are included in the state definition of indecent exposure. There is, you know, a more general disorderly conduct, state statute. You know, and I couldn't, I didn't, I don't actually know about some of these items on the list. You know, bestiality, I'm not, that might be covered under state statute. I'm not 100% sure. But certainly, a lot of sex acts are completely legal if conducted in private, but not legal if conducted in a public setting. So the you know, I could certainly say that under sub one is covered by indecent exposure state law. I'm less sure if the complete laundry list of number two is. You know, part of this is fairly hyper technical, but you know, theoretically, I think it's possible to engage in an act of masturbation without actually exposing genitals. And you know, you could probably say the same about some of these other things that are on the list, that they're not necessarily covered by indecent exposure law. And you know, number three, I definitely can tell you is not covered under existing state statute, at least not anywhere close to this degree of specificity. So you'd be trying to fit it into a, a box of, you know, disorderly conduct, which would not be a very good fit.
Ms. Hutchings?
So I still have a problem with this female breast, because we have nursing mothers and that is a park for families. And we aren't able, in many places, just like airports and everything else, keep women from nursing their children. So I still think, I think that part should be removed, because I think you would be getting yourselves into a lot of trouble.
I could address that briefly, your mayor?
Go ahead, Brooke.
Sure. So none of this, none of these ordinances can be applied to breastfeeding. There's a very specific provision in Title 29, which prohibits the application of any municipal ordinances to basically outlaw breastfeeding. So that can be found, let's see if I can remember where that is, Title 29. Yeah, so, okay, I've called it up here, the the Solotna cannot prohibit or restrict a woman breastfeeding a child in a public location. So, and it goes on to say, you know, definitions of lewd conduct simply cannot include this act or can't be interpreted or applied to include the act of a woman breastfeeding a child in public. So that particular concern is addressed in state law, and this ordinance could never, ever be applied unless the state law itself changed.
So do we need to make that clear in any way, shape or form?
You don't need to, but you certainly could, if you wanted to, you could incorporate a statement that You don't need to, but you certainly could, if you wanted to, you could incorporate a statement that. Specifically references the state law and. To the effect that. You know, nothing in this ordinance prohibits a conduct. Which a municipality is prevented. From restricting under AS 2925080.
Thank you.
Good.
Vice Mayor Parker.
Based on what Mrs. Hutchinson, Brooks have said, could that be added as a whereas clause? Brooks?
It certainly could.
Any other discussion? Mr. Chilson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This one might be to administration and or the legal representation here. Not avoiding the elephant in the room, circling back to the incident that kind of triggered all of this, I guess. Hypothetically, if the ordinances and park policies that we're looking at tonight had been in place at the time of that incident. Would this have applied to prohibit that?
Councilmember Chilton through the mayor, I'll I'll answer first and then Brooks maybe ask you to answer. It's my opinion that had these three pieces of legislation been adopted at the time of the Pride event last June. Based on what I saw, I wasn't in attendance, but based on what I saw, I don't believe it would have restricted any of the activities that occurred.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion?
Say number one more if I may, Mr. Mayor. Just one more thing I would request, could we maybe get some expansion or clarification from administration and legal? As far as just reassurances that we can provide as far as the neutrality of this ordinance and corresponding policy and. That it is not necessarily focusing on a particular user group, that this is. Taking kind of a neutral stance as far as who it's looking at and applies fairly to the entire community as a whole.
Through the mayor, Councilmember Chilton. Yes, I think the benefit of this ordinance is drafted that it's entirely focused on behaviors or acts. And that gives us real clear guidance in terms of applying the standards without regard to any particular members or group of our community.
If I may, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
One last comment. It's been a long process coming here and a lot of feelings and thoughts that have gone into this. The one thing I struggle with is I feel like this is. Adding a lot of additional city code and. Potentially, it feels a little bit like big government overreach and that we're trying to regulate so much stuff that I don't know is necessarily within the purview of a municipal agency that would normally be. Regulated via state statute. I. I don't think it harms anything. I think we fairly have clearly covered that this is, you know, it's maybe not fully necessary, but. It doesn't necessarily overly restrict anyone's rights. Or target any particular community unfairly here. So. I again, don't see the necessity of it, but I don't necessarily see the harm.
Any other comments? Saying then we'll call for the. On ordinance 2023-005 as amended.
Whackler? No. Chilton?
No.
Parker? Hutchings? No. Carrie?
Yes.
Cassidy?
No.
You have three no, two yes.
The ordinance 2023-005 as amended fails on a three-two vote. Or a two-three vote. Moving on to the next item, I'll make one quick comment. We did receive an email from Ms. B. And she was unable to attend and wanted that email as part of the record. We all received a copy of it, so I would ask the clerk to make it as part of the record. Going on to next ordinance, 2023-006, amending titles one and nine of the Saldana Municipal Code. To adopt a new section 9.20.090. A miscellaneous minor offense for lewdness or lascivious behavior and associated minor offense fine. Introduced by the mayor and the vice mayor. May I have a motion to enact? Mr. Carrie.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move the enactment of ordinance 2023-006. Amending title one and six of the Saldana Municipal Code to adopt a new section 9.20.090. Miscellaneous minor offense for lewdness or lascivious behavior is associated with minor offense fine.
May I have a second? Yeah, I have a second. Oh. Vice Mayor Parker, thank you. Did not hear that. A report from the administration.
Thank you, Mayor Whitney. I'm going to ask Mr. Chandler to provide a report on this ordinance.
Thank you very much, Stephanie. So let's start with the first whereas cla- clause because that's. You know, why this ordinance would be enacted. Which means, you know, you believe there's a need to protect the public. From. Lude, lascivious or obscene conduct in public places. So that's the fundamental purpose and reason for adoption of the ordinance. Secondly. The mode of enforcement is selected is the minor offense procedure. Which means this would be enforced in a manner similar to traffic offenses in Saldana with a set fine. The ordinance has been crafted to meet constitutional requirements. It uses as a definition of obscenity, something that has been recognized and accepted and stated in multiple court decisions. There are. So a very, a list of very specific definitions intended to. Meet standards that there be fair notice of the type of conduct that's made a violation under city code. These are very, pretty much identical to the definitions and standards in the previous ordinance that we discussed. So if there were concerns about them. In the prior ordinance, those concerns would apply equally to this particular ordinance. The scope of the ordinance is the entire city, whereas the previous ordinance was municipal parks. So this applies in a broader geographical area. And a wider range of places than the previous ordinance did. The, there's reference to both community standards, you know. What the people of Saldana think is or is not appropriate, as well as some national standards. There is a phrase that appears in a couple of places in the ordinance that I wanted to comment on, which is. In the definition of obscenity is probably the best place to look at it, which is for a sub two in the definitional section. The phrase is taken as a whole. And I want to focus on this a little bit so that the the community understands that under court cases, what is or isn't obscene. In a performance. In a public place. Depends on the entirety of the performance. So it would not necessarily be sufficient to focus on. Five seconds of a two and a half minute performance and say. Look at those five seconds. This is obscene. This is a court recognized standard. It's been in place in the law. For decades, actually. The scope of the ordinance. Does include both actual and simulated sexual conduct. Not all local ordinances that have. Been adopted of this nature includes simulated acts, but this one does. And the. You know, punchline is. Fairly specific. I mean, the ordinance is all about the definitions. And the punchline makes engaging in a public place in acts of sexual conduct, specified sexual activities and exposing. Specified anatomical areas or engaging in obscene conduct. A minor offense. So this ordinance really is, you know, all about the definitions. And I'm certainly happy to. Take any questions.
Do you have anything to add, Miss Queen?
No, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Okay. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak on this item? Those participating through Zoom, please raise your hand if you would like to comment. App users by pressing the raise your hand button and phone participants by dialing star nine on your telephone. Is there anyone in the audience in council chamber here wishing to speak on ordinance 2023-006? Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Susan Smalley and I'm from Akina, Alaska. I'd like first of all to say that. I think a lot of this discussion in this proposal is the elephant in the room. And we can say it's about many things, but and I know there's nowhere you can figure this out, but of all the people who have testified, including the people who came in and accused you of. All sorts of things that were out of control, had to be escorted by police. How many of those people were present at the event? Because this event is, this whole response is based on, this elephant is based on fear and hate. And I told somebody today, I really prefer the chickens that we're dealing with in Kenai. It's a much easier thing. I'm really grateful to all of you that you're willing. To consider this and go on. Is it obscene when I'm walking along the road in Saldana with a sign that says. God loves everyone, no exceptions. Is it obscene when people go by and shout obscenities at me? When they flip us off? When they do the rolling coal thing, which I know if you were there, you would, that's illegal. It is, but sadly, I, they do it because they're driving along. Are those things obscene? To me, they are. It's obscene to me that I'm in the groomer and pedophile category because I'm an ally and an advocate. I take that really personally. And if you're reading my shirt, you can see this, my husband wears one that says, do you want a grandfather hug? An uncle hug, a dad hug. This is what I wear and I get hugs. I'm an ally and an advocate. And that happened on the day of the Safety Town Hall. When we had a woman in our community, a part of our community, somebody who worked at the college. First she got a threatening note, then she had a broken windshield, then she was attacked in her home in Sterling. And there were people who said, oh, I think she did it herself just to get attention. So this is about the LGBT community and all of these definitions. And you know, if a, if a guy is wearing. You can, it's a plumber's butt pants or it's down to his groin. Are we going to address that? Do we have definitions for how low the pants can go? Whether or not, I don't think it's very sexy or erotic, but whether or not we need to see the crack in people's butts. I mean, you're, you're talking about stuff that's already illegal. People can't go and have sex in the park. People knew what was going on on this day. You'd have to be. You'd have to be deaf. You'd have to be not able to read. You'd have to not know what was going on when people are walking down the street with signs. And if you go to that event, which I still have not talked to anybody. No one has asked my husband and I, who are there from the beginning to the end, no one has ever asked us what happened. Were their children there? Were they at risk? What happened? You know, I even, I came last time wearing flesh colored simulated nude tights. Because this is so, this makes the chicken thing seem a lot. More comfortable and wonderful. And I'm sorry you have to deal with this as elected officials. I know she didn't read the. The, the behavior things anymore, but that's, that's just a horrible example. This was, this is about the elephant. This isn't about the other stuff. It's nice that the codes are updated. The schedules are going to be public. That's all great, but that's not what this is about.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else in the audience wishing to speak on ordinance 2023-006? Please state your name and address for the record. You have three minutes.
I'm Jacob Barlow. I live at 48176 Ryan Creek Circle and thank you for the opportunity to speak. I appreciate the hard work that's gone into this. I know it's been a lot of research, a lot of legal language. And a lot of time, a lot of time has got into this. I just wanted to say, there's definitely different perspectives on this and that's what makes. America a beautiful place that we're able to sit down and have conversations and compromise and talk together and decide as a whole community. What might be best for it. And I thank you for, for all your work you've done in that. I will say though, that many people do not view this as an attack on the quote unquote elephant in the room. Or a specific community that may have acted as a catalyst of awareness, but it has nothing to do with anyone's sexual orientation, at least from my perspective and several people that share that perspective. It just more brought awareness to how far can this be pushed? Not that it was necessarily being pushed to begin with, but it does make you wonder. Okay, how far can this actually go? There's been statements that have been made by the city attorney that. This does not, this, this fits the constitution. It doesn't breach anyone's constitutional rights. It's not only constitutional, but it's existing law in many cases. There's a lot of case law to back this up. So I find it hard to be able to make a true nonpartisan decision on this with that information that's been provided. When all we're trying to do is give a little more clarity to our community. I think there's nothing wrong with having things laid out a little, a little better. Getting rid of the, a lot of the vague language. I think. The more vague it is, the more left up to interpretation it is, the farther things can be pushed and the farther those things can be abused as well. Even on the law side. So having some good guidelines for the city and the city employees as well as city law enforcement makes a lot of sense to me. And I think it also makes a lot of sense as a community to actually be able to read this and understand, okay. This is the line. These are the things I'm allowed to do. These are the things that I probably shouldn't do. Again, this is a public environment and I really liked the focus written in here around protecting minors. Again, people under eighteen. Which eighteen is the decided age to be an adult in America and in the state of Alaska. It's depending on the age. Once you're a minor, you know, it's harder for you to make decisions of what's right for you and and there needs to be protections in place. Obviously, the parents have a lot to do with that, but some laws and ordinances need to be put in place, I believe, to further that protection. And I think some distinctions on. Some of the vague language we already have would be very important. So. The fact that this doesn't push any boundaries as far as breaking any constitutional rights or actually. Changing anything drastically. It's a lot of case law already here. I don't see an issue for actually pushing this forward. And I believe that. The decision not to makes me wonder, well, do we actually care about safety for our minors? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barlow. Anyone else here in the council chambers wishing to speak on this item? Please state your name and address for the record. You have three minutes. It's on.
Oh, it's on. No, it wasn't, but I just, thank you. And I didn't mean to say you were wrong. My name is Penny Vodler and I live in Saldana. I've lived here for 22 years and on the peninsula for forty something, I don't know how many. I'd like to thank all of you for all the work you've done. I'd like to thank our attorney. Mr. Brooks and I'd like to take, thank you, Mr. Meek or Sergeant Meek. I think a lot of work has gone into this and a lot of thought. By you folks, by the Parks and Rec, by Mr. Carmichael, by. Mr. Todd and other people and you as a board. And I think it's really important that we can take into consideration all peoples. And I think what Sue said, Ms. Smalley, excuse me, really reaches home. Because when you're threatened, as some of us were, and when you're abused, maybe not sexually, but in a different manner. That's, that's not nice or appropriate either. And so I think what this law does and what these, what these standards do in amending this chapter is it does give us some clarity. All of the clarity isn't always totally clear. But it is clarity and I think it gives people guidelines. What it doesn't give us do, what it doesn't give us. Is the ability and the need and the practice of attacking other people. And attacking other people's rights and other people's ability to come to a park where they want to celebrate who and what they are and why they are. and other people's ability to come to a park where they want to celebrate who and what they are and why they are. I was brought up to believe that each one of us has a gift that we give. Each one of us, whether we're black or white, whether we have a religion or we don't, whether we're a boy or we're a girl, that we have a reason to be here and we should be celebrated for that, not chastised for that. So I appreciate the guidance we're given here. I think this will be an ongoing process that will continue to maybe evolve and not be more restrictive. But I hope at some point, because so many of us have so many differences of opinion of how we should live our lives and how we should be guided, that we take the time to listen to other people who aren't like us. And whether or not we agree with who they are and what they speak, that they will listen to us too and see where we come from and who we are and what we do. Because this is our community, and I think it's a doggone good community. And I think there are wonderful people here. And each day that I, somebody touches my life or I can touch a kid's life especially, I want the adults to behave like some of our youngsters do and be those people who can change the world. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Vodler. Anyone else here in the chambers wishing to speak on ordinance 2023-006? I will now move over to the Zoom and see if we have anyone else with their hands raised. And I see no hands raised, so we'll move on to, um, discussion. Any discussion from the council, comments? Mr. Carey.
I don't find, at least my participation in this process has been very helpful. I find that the restrictions that, uh, from the very beginning were placed upon me in terms of not being able to discuss things, not be able to publicly say things, um, were not helpful. I absolutely respect the integrity of this group, and I'm really aware that I do not speak for anyone except myself. And I absolutely, um, again, only when this group in a majority makes a decision, do they take a stand. However, it would seem to me in these months-long processes, after numerous months where this room was filled with people over and over and over and over and over, that we as a council never really had a discussion, other than sitting behind, again, the formality of a meeting with everything being recorded so that lawsuits could be filed, to deal with the issue. This is not an issue that is somehow new. I think the reality, um, um, interactions between, uh, men and women is, um, pretty basic. Um, so I just don't feel, I wish I had, I wish I knew today a better way that we could have handled this. So we weren't sitting here today with three possibilities. Just listen to the city manager say this will help and we voted down. Wow, that was a surprise. I believe the people in the community would benefit if we, the leaders, could provide a mechanism by which we could discuss some of these things. And if indeed, we're going to present this discussion, pardon me for what I just heard again, just now, that the whole issue is about one group versus everyone else. And that, I don't think that this issue is about at all. Uh, I think it's a valid thing to talk about, uh, uh, there are things that our children should not be exposed to, period. And so, um, my primary dissatisfaction is with my lack of involvement in, in this discussion with the community. Um, I have found that in attempting to promote discussion, it's not legal. I'm not allowed to discuss it with other members of the council, and I can't do anything in writing. That's what I was, yeah, I was real clear from the very beginning. Um, when this first came up, when I asked, could I see what was involved? Again, by the city manager, I told she couldn't send it to me. I'd have to find it on my own. Uh, because somehow if there was a connection between her sending this item to me, that could mess up all kinds of stuff, which is interesting. And so, um, this is before us. I hope that we will move ahead with it. Um, I, I like the one comment that was made by a previous speaker that, uh, we're not done with this issue yet. And I think there's still more things that we need to do. But as a council, I'd like to see us, is there a way that we could find where we could handle this type of an issue better? Uh, I'm real clear, I wasn't pleased, meeting after meeting, sitting up here and almost thinking like we were, again, going to be shot by the group. Now, I know that wasn't the case. Okay, I'm real clear, my knowledge. Uh, but it was very stern and it was somewhat intense, over and over and over and over. I don't think that's good citizenship that we allowed that to go on, meeting after meeting after meeting after meeting. And then there was almost kind of humor, "Oh, they're not here tonight. I guess things are back normal." I'm not sure that was the right response to the fact that people gave up on us. I, uh, hope we move forward. I appreciate, uh, absolutely the staff. I don't have any doubt. There's been a lot of research, I'm sorry. There's been a lot of research done and a lot of different people looking at things. Um, and so I think that is good. Uh, but at least, um, I do not feel yet that we have been, excuse me, I do not feel that I have been a good leader in working on this for this community. Thank you.
Any other discussion or comments? Mr. Chilson.
I, I guess I would just add that I agree with, uh, Councilman Carey that there are certainly things that exist out there, actions that our children do deserve to be protected from. Um, and I, again, I don't disagree with that. My issue is that those protections already exist. They're defined at a state level, and I don't know if it's necessarily the most, uh, effective response to try to double-regulate at a level of that this would be. And I, I don't see this actually accomplishing anything other than just growing government regulation, for the sake, growing regulation to say that we did something, even though in reality, this doesn't really do much at all. Um, so that's my issue at this point with, um...
Ms. Hutchings.
So I just want clarification. We're talking about the whole city of Soldatna is what this would handle, not just the parks. Is that correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Vice Mayor Parker.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Whitney. Uh, for, um, Brooks. So ordinance 2023-006, how does this differ from state law?
Well, to, uh, begin with, it is, uh, much more detailed and specific than state law. The, um, secondly, um, there is no state law, um, addressing, uh, simulated, uh, sexual conduct, which is addressed in a couple of part, uh, places in this ordinance. And, um, those would be the, the main ones. I mean, it, it also, this ordinance, uh, deals with conduct that doesn't involve actually exposing genitals. There is nothing similar to that in state law, so this is more restrictive than state law. And it's, uh, you know, in my view, um, it is a lot clearer when it comes to enforcement as to what is or isn't, um, illegal conduct than existing state law statutes. I mean, you will not find this level of detail in the criminal code of the state of Alaska. So that would be the major differences.
Um, follow-up if I might, Mayor Whitney. So if this is more restrictive than state law, um, would we be found in violation? Are we allowed? I mean, oftentimes, local governments can't go above and beyond state law. Is that the case here?
Uh, absolutely not. In fact, unless there's specific prohibitions, uh, in state law for local regulations, uh, cities have, uh, complete discretion to be more strict than the folks down in Juneau have decided. So that's not a concern at all.
Thank you. Ms. Whackler, you had your hand up at one.
Yeah, this would be directed towards Brooks as well. Um, is it commonplace and normal to have things that are this specified, um, which are already covered by state law, like listed like this, um, in ordinances and not just said, "In addition to state law, this, this and this." Um, or does it create more confusion, um, having them listed as this in detail?
Well, in my mind, it creates less confusion. Uh, this particular ordinance is not wildly different than ordinances that other communities, um, have adopted, uh, either in Alaska or in other states. So, um, I don't think it would create any confusion. Our local law enforcement folks would be, um, in some ways, you know, better positioned to understand what the community expects, and what the expectations are for people that are in Soldatna than they are under current state law.
Uh, follow-up to that if I may. Um, so if someone were to read this as a standalone as to what the minor offense that would have a $250 fine would be, they could read it as sexual intercourse, uh, in the park would be a $250 fine. And that's not actually accurate because that would be against the law in other forms. So there would be additional charges. I mean, it wouldn't be just standard, like exposing yourself to a minor, um, wouldn't be just this fine, correct?
Well, that's a great question. Uh, the, um, law enforcement personnel, uh, this is true in any municipal department in, uh, in Alaska. Uh, they have the authority to issue citations under both state law and, uh, local ordinance. So it certainly is possible for, um, the Soldatna Police Department to decide that they are going to cite somebody, um, having sexual intercourse in public, they're going to try to cite them under a state law, uh, rather than under this local ordinance. Um, you typically would not do both. You would make a decision as to, uh, one or the other. And that would be, you know, that would be the officer's decision. Um, and my, um, you know, and, and the, my impression, uh, is that, um, whether or not state law or local law would be decided would be impacted by a number of factors, including, uh, whether they thought the city attorney or the state district attorney would, you know, be more likely to follow up and actually prosecute it versus dismissing the charges and that type of thing.
Any other questions or discussion? Seeing none, uh, call for vote. Vice Mayor Parker.
This is, this is an issue that we've spent a lot of time, a lot of time on. I wouldn't say that we have, as Councilmember Carey said, had the time to delve into it. And based on the comments that we've received, both tonight, um, and through emails, I would move that we table ordinance 2023-006.
Is there a second? Sorry. Ms. Whackler. Give me a second. Any discussion?
It's not debate.
Oh, non-debate, okay. We'll call for the vote.
Would you like me to explain? So the motion to table essentially puts this piece of legislation on every agenda moving forward under, um, pending legislation. And it would stay there until either it is removed from the table by motion, and at that time it would be heard at the next, or be back on the floor at the, at the next council meeting. Um, or it would fall off the table after certification of the next regular election.
Does anyone understand that? Call for the vote.
Carey.
Yes.
Chilson.
No.
Parker.
Yes.
Hutchings.
Yes.
Whackler.
Yes.
Cassidy.
Yes.
You have four yes, one no.
I'm sorry?
Four yes, one no.
Ordinance 2023-006 is tabled on four one vote with one absent. Moving on to the next item on the agenda is Resolution 2023-014, adopting updated Soldatna Creek Park special event policy and reservation procedures introduced by the city manager. They have a motion to adopt. Ms. Hutchings.
I will make a motion to adopt Resolution 2023-014, adopting updated Soldatna Creek Park special event policies and reservations procedures.
Have a second. Thank you, Mr. Carey. Uh, a report from the administration.
Thank you, Mayor Whitney. Um, as I mentioned, this achieves other administrative, uh, improvements that we see as process for improvements, and I think that's, uh, regardless of the previous actions taken. So I think there's merit in moving forward with this consideration. However, uh, I don't know if we dropped off, if Brooks dropped off. There's, I did a quick scan through, uh, the resolution, and it does use the words disorderly conduct, and it does use the words obscene. So I think we might need additional time to decide whether the city has sufficient definitions of those. Um, if not, I would potentially come back and recommend those phrases be deleted.
Yes, he did draw a vote. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak on this item? For those participating through Zoom, please raise your hand if you would like to comment. App users by pressing the Raise Your Hand button and phone participants by dialing star nine on your telephone. Is there anyone here in the chamber wishing to speak on, uh, Resolution 2023-014? Seeing none, I'm looking at Zoom, and I see no hands raised on Zoom. Having no one wishing to speak, the item is back before the council. Seeing no, uh, comments or discussion, call for the vote.
Hutchings.
No.
Chilson.
No.
Parker.
Yes.
Carey.
Yes.
Whackler.
No.
Cassidy.
No.
You have two yes, four no.
Resolution 2023-014 fails on a two to three vote. Next item on the agenda is mayor and council reports. Uh, announce the recipients of the mini grant awards. Hopefully I could remember this. Bridges is receiving a thousand dollars. Um, Lakeside is receiving a thousand dollars, and Surfbirds is receiving a thousand dollars. My report, uh, uh, we're in Juneau, oh, I guess it's about two weeks ago now. You know, I had the opportunity to, uh, attend the AML conference there, uh, very, very informative. Some great information coming out, uh, some great speakers from DOT, from, um, AMICO and, um, the governor's office, uh, there's a, a great bit of information came out on the carbon, uh, project that they're pushing, the carbon, um, injection and carbons, other things, um, having to do with our forests. We were, excuse me, able to meet with, um, the, um, chief of staff for Senator, um... Jesse Bjorkman and able to meet with the staff for Representative Ben Carpenter. And we had the opportunity to meet with our representative, former council member, Justin Ruffridge. Very informative. Got a lot of good information and they're hard at work down there. And hopefully they will be able to get done in the proper amount of time this year. Moving on to the next item is council reports, Parks and Recreation Board meeting, Mr. Chilton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Parks and Recreation Advisory Board was able to meet last Thursday, March 2nd. It was fairly brief agenda. They did go over selection of the chair and vice chair for this upcoming year. Penny Vada was selected as chair, Jim Delbear as vice chair. Additionally, there was a, a large portion of time committed to reviewing the FY 2425 department budget with specifically a deep dive into large spending items that were coming up. Some of those that were reviewed by the advisory board included snow removal equipments. They're looking at getting a couple of large dump trailers, a large purchase of additional skates. And new to this purchase would be adaptive skating equipment to go along with that to continue to support the large community interest in our skating programs, both at the sports center as well as elsewhere. Additionally, they are going to be putting ice on a little earlier this year, as soon as possibly July 31st, I believe. And part of that would be a goal to support local kids that are doing hockey tryouts this fall. And that way they would be able to do those here locally in Saldana rather than having to travel to Anchorage or elsewhere. And then lastly, the Parks Department is going to be requesting approval for plus one FTE growth for an additional full-time labor position. They were old Friday, really robust overview of just all the additional responsibilities and services that the Parks Department has been taking on over the last several years. And it's been some time since that department has grown to compensate for that level of responsibility as it continues to increase. So that concludes my report on the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. I would be happy to stand for questions.
Any questions for Mr. Chilton? None, thank you. We'll move on to city manager's report.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I also had a report on the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Yep. I missed that one.
Thank you. Planning and Zoning Commission was able to meet last Wednesday, March 1st. On the agenda, we reviewed Resolution PG 2023-006, which would recommend the approval of the Saldana Junction subdivision Creekside Estates 2023 edition. But this was specifically looking at is there's a 19 acre lot behind Fred Meyer owned by the Farnsworth Trust that is currently seeking to be replatted into eight lots. And that would be rural residential. It currently is residential, it would stay rural residential post-replat. Originally, there had been some discussion early on in this project, I believe, to include pedestrian connectivity through that lot. But it was removed due to cost. There was some discussion among commissioners on a desire to see the design of that parcel of land be modified to bring back pedestrian connectivity through it. There was a motion made to do so and that failed. However, the main motion to recommend the replating did pass the PNC. And additionally, they reviewed Resolution PG 2023-007, which would approve the vacation of a pedestrian easement within the new Homestead subdivision. So this is on a lot that was acquired back in Homestead area, I believe, for the purposes of doing the, the East Readout Connector. And the city now owns that lot and in reviewing options for what we can do with that moving forward, now that we're got the replating done and the the ability in the future to really put in that connector street. One of the things that was discovered by the borough in this review is that there's a pedestrian easement right down the middle of this lot that had been forgotten. And if that's not vacated, that really limits our ability as a city to sell or further develop that lot. So it was the recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Commission to pursue that removal or vacation of the pedestrian easements. And that concludes my Planning and Zoning Commission report and again, would be happy to stand for questions.
Any questions for Mr. Chilton? We'll now move on to the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor Whitney. Following up on your and councilmembers' trip to Juneau, Mr. Cornellson, I took a trip the subsequent week and we think that's strategic to do kind of a one-two approach to meetings with our legislators. And we were in Juneau for about 48 hours and it was jam-packed with meetings. So we were able to meet with the governor's chief of staff, the deputy commissioner to the DOT and some of her team. We met via Zoom with Commissioner Bruni from the DEC and had another meeting with the East C folks as well as meeting with several of our state representatives and senators as well as their staff. So I think we met with about 12 different legislators as well as those agency meetings. And we use that as an opportunity to talk about the city's priorities, recognizing that the state capital budget has been pretty thin in prior years. But just wanting to make sure that folks are familiar with a lot of the good things that are happening here in Saldana and that we are also aware of their priorities as they head into this session. So that was a good trip. Wanted to put on your radar, we, we meet bi-weekly with our Riverfront Redevelopment consultants and they continue to charge ahead in a way that we're pretty excited about. They're planning their next round of in-person community engagement and they're looking at April 19th and 20th for those days. So I had discussed with the mayor, the possibility of having a council work session and maybe a lunchtime work session. We would make sure we feed you. That would be on Wednesday, the 19th. And the team will be in town to present more specific development concepts and land use ideas. So we're excited to share that with you. The lunchtime work session of the council would facilitate a Wednesday evening public open house. So we had great attendance at the last public event. And I, we've got a lot of people following this project via the emails we send out in our stakeholder group. So I hope that that's well attended as well. So please save the date for April 19th and 20th. Wanted to let you know, we're having a bit of communication issues with our meter reading software in the utility. So we remote read off of the predominantly commercial account holders that have that meter reading software. And we believe that we've identified a fix and we believe that a solution is coming related to a battery issue. But we've made sure that we notified those account holders that are impacted. Melanie had sent out a letter from the finance department, letting them know that for the current billing cycle, we're using an estimated usage based on what the software is estimating. And we're working to resolve that quickly. So I wanted to make sure that, that you were aware that that's something that we're working on. Our snow crew was out this week scraping the sidewalks again and our mains. There's a new berm out there, but in some place there's, there's bare pavement and concrete. So that's good. I think we're going to have a good, Scott, I'll say Scotty thinks we're going to have a good thaw this year and our team was out assisting with some of the school district properties. So we, we helped clear the turf and the tracks. I know that we were out at So High and, and Skyview and we do that partnership with the school district, helping our Saldana teams get a, an earlier start being outdoors. So I know they were working on that this week as well. Congratulations and I'm excited for the city manager transition. I will be reaching out to Ms. Bauer and we've been in communication already, planning for that effective transition. So she and I will be coordinating over the coming months to make sure that she's able to be here and, and meet with our team and get the information she needs and that I'm available after she starts as well, to, to ensure that she's successful and, and getting started here. And I know she will be. Almost couldn't read my own writing. Very last thing, I do still owe the council a memo on the status of grant projects that the city has either the projects that are underway versus we've applied for already versus currently applying for. And the only, I, I've, I've been intending to get this to you and I'm, it's taking longer than I wanted and I intended. So I apologize for that, but it's just because there's so much going on. So I'm working with Kyle and our Public Works Department with Laura, with John. So we're, we're compiling all these things and there are a lot of opportunities. And I want to put that all in a memo and I'll email that to the council, letting you know what are the state and federal funding that we've identified that we've either recently applied for and are waiting to hear back? Or there's a deadline that's looming that's right in front of us. And so we've got both kinds. I'll make sure that I get you an update so that you can see what are the projects from our priority list that we're pursuing outside funding for. And I think that concludes my report. Thank you, Mayor.
Any questions for the city manager? I have one while I'm thinking of it. Number of months ago, ACS was talking about using some of our polls for internet, I guess it was. What's the status of that?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. So we haven't had any communication with them in quite some time. I'd be happy to follow up and find out if that's a project they're still interested in pursuing or whether it's no longer a priority. So I'll make sure to make that outreach.
Thank you. Moving on to the next item on the agenda is public comments. Members of the public will have three minutes to comment. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment? For those participating through Zoom, please raise your hand if you would like to comment. App users by pressing the Raise Your Hand button and phone participants by dialing star nine on your telephone. Is there anyone, please step forward here and state your name and address for the record and you have three minutes.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name is Zeke Johnston. I live at 3428 Poppy Wood off of K Beach. I've been a participating member of the community from the beginning. And I want to say, uh, thank you for all the hard work that has been put in. I met with several members of this council regarding the event in the park early on, and I've been pretty heavily involved with some hopeful changes moving forward. One thing I just want to add some clarity to is some of the confusion, I think, that we have in addressing this issue is that we label groups within the community. There's one side that's saying the LGBTQ community, then the other side is saying the community at large. And I think it's, I, I think it can even be kind of dangerous to some extent to start isolating groups of people within the community when we're making decisions, if that makes sense. So there's even on kind of a national level, we see this big push to, to isolate and specialize on groups within a community. And I think that the intent of, of the founders of our country at the beginning was to view all peak, all people as having equal rights regardless of gender or color or ethnicity, right? And so that's, that's been the intent of, uh, my, my intent and the intent of others that have showed up here is for safety for everyone. There's been no one from the individuals that I've showed up to the council meetings with, with any intent to promote violence. It's never been the case, never been the intent. And even though I was not pleased with what happened in our park, I would give my life for someone, for, for any of those people that were there. I value human life in a big way. So this is about the community as a whole. And if we're willing to make decisions that are going to protect everyone involved. So thank you for the work that you put in. And we're not finished yet. I'm grateful to see that this was tabled. The definition was tabled so that we can hopefully make some more progress on getting some changes made. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else in the audience wishing to speak on any item? Please state your name and address for the record and you will have three minutes.
Penny Vada, I live in Saldana. I just wanted to say, Mr. Chilton, thank you for the report that you had with the planning and zoning. And I, I would really, I would love it if we could have pedestrian connectivity. When you go down to Spokane and other areas, you can go to Boston or Cambridge and there is connectivity to the, to the waterway. And there's connectivity that brings people together and provides another avenue for them to walk. And I don't know if that would be bicycles because it'd be pretty hard to bicycle on that grate. Actually, it would be impossible. But I, I don't know, I didn't look into this one. I've been looking into a lot of other things in the, in the community. But I think that connectivity is really important if it doesn't harm or harness anybody who's buying property. And I know in Spokane, they have a commercial area where they have people that they can go down both sides of that, that river. And they have it also in an outlying area where my daughter took me, I think, to try to get rid of me, to do mountain biking. But I managed to go back and go where I wanted to go. And it was brilliant how they set it up. And people who own those pieces or those lots had an incredible amount of privacy. And I don't know how deep the lots are or anything like that. But that's just one, one additional way we can connect our community to the people and the places that give us joy. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Penny.
Anyone else here in the chamber wishing to make any comments? Seeing none, and we'll take a look at Zoom and I see no hands raised there. Moving on to the next agenda item, council comments. We'll start with Mr. Cassidy.
All right. Thanks for having me. This has been a really interesting meeting. Before we, before we came here, my mom was wondering how long it would take. And I said, well, I don't know, my last 30 minutes. And so if you've heard tapping through the meeting, I've been responding to her question saying, no, just a little longer, just a bit more. Yeah, I'm glad, I'm glad to be here. I like to, I like to be aware of what is happening and why it's happening in terms of our legislation. As for a sort of report, for, let's see, for our sports, our ski season has ended with our girls team doing really well. Our top girl, Tania Bounstra, got 15th overall. And as a freshman, that is phenomenal. She's doing really well. Our second girl, Ariana Canova, she's my greatest sophomore. She got, her places alternated, but I think overall she got 18th. And that is also incredible. That top tier of skiers is really competitive. As for guys, I think there's a lot more competition. Our top guy, Drew Cox, Tyson Cox's son, he got somewhere around 40th, which was really good. That was good for him. I unfortunately was not able to make it. I left on a trip, so I have two chances. Let's see, our basketball team is maybe right now, but they're going to Kodiak. So good luck to them. I, I don't know the, the basketball teams this year super well, but I think they'll perform just fine. Let's see, baseball's starting, track's starting. The first track official meet is in almost a month and baseball doesn't start for a while either. Let's see, I think that's it. I think, I think that's everything.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Ms. Hutchings.
Well, I had a great time at AML as well. We had a wonderful breakfast with Diane Blumer, who is our lobbyist. And, and the only one that didn't eat was Paul because he figured he needed to get up at six o'clock in the morning to have his breakfast. I had a great dinner with Representative Andy Story. We all had a great dinner with Representative Ruffridge. We visited with Senator Bjorkman at the AML reception. I visited with Representative Edgeman. And I think the one thing that I really enjoyed was the presentation by Lisa, Senator Lisa Murkowski. And I got to touch base with Ms. Waller and Ms. Ramponi, which are local girls that work for the senator in Washington. So, and I'm happy to see the snow melting. And I'm hoping that baseball starts, but you're going to have to get rid of that snow on the track, on the fields. So with that, good night. Thank you.
Ms. Whackler.
I guess to be redundant, I also attended the AML conference last week. And it was wonderful to get to know fellow council members, Linda, Dan and Mayor Whitney. And kind of learn just a little bit more about how the state works and budgetary concerns. And just getting all the reports from all the different departments that came to speak to us about a myriad of things from what the troopers are doing with human trafficking and what the different alcohol stamps, that all of the, the changes that are going to be made for that. It was my first time in Juneau ever and I was born here in Saldana in 1981. So first time ever in Juneau. It was interesting to, to view our capital and I'm really glad I got a chance to, to be there and see it. I was really happy with all the time that Justin Ruffridge reserved for us. We went to his office, spoke with him, he set aside time for us and then we
We um went to his office, spoke with him, he set aside time for us and then we also had dinner with him um to make that a priority to talk to us. I think it was really great. Yeah, so thank you to um sending me there. I appreciate it. Good night.
Mr. Carey.
Since our last meeting, I completed a uh an election process, which I feel I was very fortunate. And my fortune was that the other candidates were exceptional. I kept telling people there were four people running and I expected to end up fifth and that's basically sort of what I did. We live in an awesome country. The idea that we could go all around the peninsula, be asked all kinds of questions, whether it was on uh radio or with the newspapers or distant forums. Um but that each of us were able to the best of our ability in good faith, answer those questions uh without anything held against us, no threats of violence, no problems of retribution. Um I certainly want to congratulate uh Peter Manchick in terms of being our a new mayor. We need to trust each other more. And tonight, again, to me very much speaks to that. Um um it is just awesome to be an American. Thank you.
Mr. Chilton.
Uh, thank you. I would like to thank everyone that came out tonight to share feedback on what can be certainly perceived as a very difficult issue to address. And the fact that we're able to have respectful discussions on both sides of this um is something that I greatly appreciate. And I'm hoping that we can continue to expand on those discussions and that when this comes back off the table eventually that we're able to build on that and find a solution that is balanced and and reasonable and fair to all. So, thank you.
Vice Mayor Parker. Next item on the agenda is executive session. There is none. I don't know reason for one. Uh next, meeting announcements, March sixteenth, twenty twenty-three Airport Commission meeting, five thirty PM. And March twenty-second, twenty twenty-three, City Council meeting at six PM. Uh I will not be here for that, but I will hopefully come in on Zoom and Vice Mayor Parker will be doing the meeting. And with nothing else before us, we are adjourned.